Okay, welcome, everyone. This is the October 30th, 2025 meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals pursuant to Governor Healey's March 28th, 2025 signing of Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 extending certain COVID measures adopted during the state of emergency suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until June 30, 2027. This meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided far in the order. A reminder, persons who'd like to listen to the meeting while in progress may do so by calling 508-945-4410, conference ID 291-324-885, or join the meeting online via the Microsoft Teams link in the posted agenda. This is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV 1072, but despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. So we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue hearing or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. At this time, I'd like to ask everybody to take off all hats and also shut off all gadgets that make any noise whatsoever, and if you could keep your conversations either very, very low and brief or in the hall, that would be appreciated. Thank you. So we start meetings with a roll call of all board members, and then we ask of any citizens or non-board members on the telephone, which just makes sure that they make their identity known. The notice is read by our staff, Sarah Clark on my right, and Town Council will provide an update on the pro forma. That'll be the first thing we hear about. The applicant will present any changes to the project. I will read, and everybody will read, the letters received by the board. We passed them out for Halloween today, so everybody is going to participate in that. Anyone wishing to comment on the application may speak for up to two minutes today. Those present in the meeting room will be recognized first, followed by anyone online. The applicant may respond to written and oral comments. Board members will provide additional comments or ask questions of the applicant, public or town council. The board will vote to close the public hearing today and move into deliberations. Once in deliberations, no additional public comment will be allowed. All votes are taken by roll call, and the board will vote to continue the deliberations to a date certain. At the end of the meeting, we will close the meeting via verbal confirmation and note the time of adjournment. So as always, we start with a roll call vote of all members authorizing this form of meeting.
David H. speech, and I approve this former meeting.
Ed Acton, I approve.
David S. Nixon, I approve.
All C. Simple, I approve.
Lee Hovey, I approve.
Stephen D. DeBorne, I approve.
Virginia Vanwick, I approve.
And Randy Partash, I approve as well. So Sarah, take it away.
Application number 25-034, Penrose LLC, 15 Milk Street, 16th floor, Boston, Mass. 02109. The property is owned by the Town of Chatham, located at Zero and 1533 Main Street, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map 9D Block 4A Lot 1 and map 9D Block 4 Lot 18. The applicants are requesting the grant of a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Law Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23 and 760 CMR 56 for the construction of 48 dwelling units in nine structures. Also proposes the construction of a management building. The applicants are requesting the grant of various waivers from regulations promulgated by the Chatham zoning bylaw and other local regulations. The property contains 128,492 square feet, 2.95 acres in the R20 zoning district. This was continued from May 8th, June 5th, July 15th, August 21st, September 18th, and October 2nd, 2025.
Thank you. Okay, so the first thing we were planning to do is speak to Town Council, I believe he's online, Attorney Jay Talaman, to give us an update on the pro forma, if I'm not mistaken.
Right. So, thank you, Randy. Jay Talaman, Town Council. So when the board was last together, they authorized the retention of an expert to peer review the pro forma provided by Penrose. And with that information, we then went out to speak with the various folks that do this work. It's a little bit complicated because it's not just a matter of dollars and cents. There are specific guidelines under 40B that have to be adhered to that are not quite simple math. They involve standards that allow use of different values in terms of interpreting certain particular items regarding related transactions and land costs and other assorted costs and revenues for a particular project. With that, there are a small number of professionals out there that do this work from top to bottom. Sometimes, you know, most frequently, we use those experts, there's five or six of them that we can use for this kind of analysis. If those experts are not available, or if we had to pursue this matter through an adjudication at the Housing Appeals Committee, we might combine it with a number of different experts, accountants, construction cost estimators, and the like. Try as we might, we did contact five or six people who are the folks that are more, most frequently identified as being capable of doing this. Some of them didn't respond, some of them, several of them had conflicts because they have done work for Penrose, and some were retired. So as I've discussed with the, with the chair, with Randy, and, and with Sarah, we were unable to obtain experts. That doesn't mean that the analysis is done in the event that this ended up at the Housing Appeals Committee, and no one's clamoring for that, obviously, but in the event that it ended up there, we would still be making a case under those things. But for the time being, and in the short time period we had available, we weren't able to get a single expert that could do all of the work to peer review. So that leaves the board without an opportunity to have expert review with this and puts us back in the realm of kind of negotiating in good faith with the applicant for the purposes of this, which is the, the final hearing session absent a, an approved extension.
Okay, thank you very much. So we don't have a peer review, and there's nothing we can do about it. That's my, that's my understanding. Okay, so we're going to go on to the next topic, which is the applicant will present any changes to the project. Welcome, Tony Singer.
Thank you. All right, thank you. So, good afternoon. For the record, Andrew Singer here on behalf of the applicant. After so many months of meetings, you know the whole team, but I will here with us, Rio Cicati and Charlie Adams from Penrose, Mark Woffel from Cali Cottrell, Joe Henderson from Horsey Witten, and Paul Adaman from Union Studio. What I wanted to go over this afternoon, as you just suggested, are updates and basically closing discussion, because, you know, you'll be closing the hearing this afternoon. What is up on the screen, we gave you a supplemental submission, which we're going to go through, gave it to you last week, but this is the plan that you looked at last time. So this was before changes, just wanted you to, this was the layout with the management building, with the community building. And in response to comments and requests and suggestions from last time, we've made a few changes. First off, trees. The seven trees that are circled along Route 28 at the front of the property, the applicant is proposing to increase the planting caliper from three to three and a half inches, which is what it was originally, to four to four and a half inches. These larger trees will have a planting height of somewhere between 18 to 26 feet, depending on nursery stock available at the time of construction. It also depends on different tree species, as Mark was telling me, grow to different heights, you just never know. But that's the general height of what they would be. And as I've noted before, we believe that this provides additional screening that you were looking for, remembering as I was submitting that the purpose of screening is not to block a property, but it's to soften it. And we would respectfully suggest that doing this with these seven trees will help do that. As far as irrigation, that was another topic of discussion, and the applicant is proposing to install an irrigation well to handle the landscape needs of the property. So it would not be a, it wouldn't be water coming in, in, in the, in the plant bags I was talking about, it wouldn't be tapping off any of the buildings, it would be an irrigation well. We don't have it here. Okay. We didn't put a slide in, but as far as lighting, we did provide to you a photometric plan and cut sheets for new proposed lighting. You would ask for something that was more in keeping with Chatham, and so that has been proposed. Unfortunately, I just realized we did not put it on the slide packet, but I know you have copies of it.
And I think it's on the website, too.
I, I think, yes, it is. I just unfortunately can't show it to you right now. I apologize. So as far as the management building itself, in the spirit of ongoing cooperation and notwithstanding that it really does oppose the ideas, no surprise to you, because I've said it before, if the board ultimately votes to approve the project, then the applicant is willing and proposes at that point to further reduce the size of the management building. They will eliminate the multipurpose room designated for resident use. They don't want to, but if you vote to approve the project, they're willing to. What this would do, they're also reorienting the building, and you can see the layout here. Before, if you can see on that plan, the entrance and the porch was on the back of the building, as you can see there. Now it is being reoriented to have the entrance on the west side of the building. The building is cut back further in size. What you're looking at on this plan is a building that is 50% smaller than the building was originally, when it had a gym, a fitness room, and the multipurpose room. So this is a one-story building. The footprint now that's shown up there is 2154 square feet. We also had provided, well, this is what it would, whoop, sorry, this is what it would look like as the rendering from the street, and we can go back and forth with these. And this is the elevation, just directly up for you. And then this is the floor plan showing what is in the building. So what you can see on this plan as well, as you can see in red, dashed in red around the management building, is what the building was going to be. So now it is further back from Route 28 than it was before. It is a building that is absolutely essential to the applicant. And so what's here before you today, as I noted, is if the board ultimately, when you go into deliberations, vote to approve the project, this is the plan we're submitting. If, however, and this gets to something Jay was talking about as well, if the board ultimately votes either to not approve the project or to approve it with conditions that the applicant feels would render the project uneconomic, the applicant at that point would respectfully submit that you vote on the original design and the original plan that was submitted. The applicant made many changes to try to work with the neighbors on setbacks, to try to work with you on the management building. If, however, those weren't enough, if, if what's up here as a plan does not garner the support that it needs to pass, then they would ask you to vote on the original plan so that when the Housing Appeals Committee looks at this, they can be looking at the original design, which is really what the applicant felt was the best for the property, before beginning to negotiate, as Town Council noted, work with the neighbors, and try to come up with something that hopefully would work for everybody. Want to talk briefly about the crosswalk in the top right of this. The applicant, as you know, has repeatedly stated that they are willing to do this crosswalk. They proposed it on this plan. It is one that has received endorsement from the police chief in a couple different emails that you have in the, in your packet. And however, as we've noted, and you know, Route 28 is a state highway. So this development, as far as conditioning, we are asking you to consider a condition that requires the applicant to submit to Mass. Highway, to do everything in its power to obtain approval for the crosswalk, but not to make it an absolute condition on implementing the project. Because if you do that, then that can be a condition that renders the project uneconomic, because what if the state doesn't approve it? Then the applicant can't build the project. All of that being said, the applicant is going, has, has tried to reach out to the state, is willing to reach out to the state, will reach out to the state, and as we understand it, town support for this crosswalk is going to be critical to the state, right? Just because an applicant comes and says, we'd like a crosswalk on Route 28, they'll say, yeah, thank you. But the town needs to support it. The police chief, the Board of Appeals, the select board. If there's strong and substantial town support for this crosswalk, we're hopeful that it will be approved. But we also, the applicant needs to have the flexibility that if for some reason it's not, they still need a project if you're voting to approve a project. Separate from all this, because we've had a lot of conversation about the crosswalk and about children, what I would like, for the record and for you to realize, is that from the beginning, the applicant has provided for a safe and efficient connection to the town's infrastructure. There is a new sidewalk proposed across the entire front of the property. It connects to a sidewalk to the west that goes down to the Barn Hill Roundabout. There is a crosswalk there. It takes you across the street to the town's sidewalk infrastructure on the north side of the street. So it is not fair to say that this project has been designed without, if it was without a crosswalk, is, is unsafe. It has been designed, the applicant took pedestrian safety seriously from the beginning. It proposed a sidewalk. It proposed a connection to the town's infrastructure. And so we submit that without the crosswalk, it's a safe proposal. With the crosswalk, might be that much better. I'd like to end with, and maybe not end, but follow with two, two matters. The first is, I would like to address the suggestion that was raised at the last meeting about somehow combining this project with the project at Zero Meeting House Road to further reduce units. And I would like to end then with a discussion again about the legal standard and the guidance that Boards of Appeals and you look at in looking at comprehensive permit applications. At the last hearing, it became evident that we believe there's a misunderstanding concerning density as it relates to the economics involved in the two proposals. The applicant has noted in writing and in testimony that because of the synergies and operating efficiencies that can result from having these two projects within, you know, reasonable proximity to each other, that they felt they could do something less than they normally do. They normally don't do projects less than 60 units. What they, that was interesting. In this case, they feel the numbers that have been on their original pro forma that they reviewed with the town and the subsequent pro forma establishing it that we submitted to you for, for a smaller density, they believe strongly that the 42 units at Meeting House and the 48 units here at Main Street are the lowest they can go and still make the two separate necessitating, separate funding projects work. Doing something less doesn't work. It just doesn't work economically for them. So it is not a case of combining these two projects, you get something more than 60. No, it's that these two separate projects are each less than 60, and in the applicant's professional opinion, doing this for so long, the number of units, the 48 units on this site are the lowest they can go, and that's what they submitted originally to the town, and so that's what is before you, you know, as you vote. Penrose has been doing this for more than five decades. Their mission, their vision, and their drive has been to provide affordable housing for working people. You may have gone to their website, I know I have, and, and you'll see all that, and you can see they have over 27,000 rental housing units. They have oodles of information on that website about who they are, the character of what they are, and how they do what they do. And I know I've said it before, I'll say it again now. This is not a case where Penrose proactively reached out to the town and said, we're going to do a 40B in your town. No, this was the Town of Chatham on town land engaging in an extensive public and transparent vetting process, seeking a denser development on this parcel. The town reviewed multiple applicants, as you know from this testimony. They selected Penrose. They negotiated with Penrose. They entered into an LDA with Penrose, and we filed an application with this board. This is an application that was done through a process that the town invited and Penrose The Board of Appeals has adopted regulations under Chapter 40B. Not all towns do, but you have. Under those, it's, it says that these rules of Chatham Board are, are adopted under the Anti-Snob Zoning Act, Chapter 40B. The purpose of that act and these rules is to facilitate the development of affordable housing in Massachusetts. These rules must be read in conjunction with and implemented in a manner consistent with the complete regulations of the Housing Appeals Committee and the guidelines for the local review of comprehensive permits. Those local guidelines, promulgated by the state, the guidelines that were just mentioned, note that the statute, Chapter 40B, requires that a comprehensive permit be granted when it is, quote, "consistent with local needs," end quote, and describes a balancing test. You've heard me say that on numerous occasions. That is, on some sites, it may be possible to build affordable housing that does not comply with certain local restrictions, but nevertheless has no negative impact on local health, safety, environmental, design, open space, and planning concerns. For other sites, the impact on these local concerns may be limited enough so that these concerns are outweighed by the need for low and moderate income housing. In either case, the law requires the board to waive local conditions, or local restrictions, I'm sorry. Finally, under the regulations, in considering conditions that might be imposed on a project, the Zoning Board of Appeals should focus on the health, safety, environmental, design, open space, and planning impacts of the development. Respectfully submit that Penrose has gone above and beyond in trying to do exactly that. Throughout the public hearing process, throughout meetings with the neighbors, throughout meetings with town officials, they have tried to respond to legitimate concerns and requests of the board and the neighbors. In some cases, they thought they had agreement with the neighbors, didn't turn out to be the case. In some of the cases, some of the changes, this board has applauded. There has been ardent support for this project, and there's also ardent opposition to this project. That's kind of par for the course with 40B. This project is a project that we submit merits approval. There is a desperate need for housing in Chatham, and everyone, including every single member on this board acknowledges that. I realize that. There is significant support, as I said, for this project in the community. The applicant submits that this project is consistent with local needs, that you can condition it as we have suggested and as submitted per the plans in the record, in a way that provides affordable housing for the community. It provides what the community had set out for in the RFP process, and that the project merits approval. We appreciate all of your time as you've gone through this public hearing. This is, I think, our seventh month before you. We know you're going to close the hearing today and begin your deliberations, and we welcome that. We look forward to that conversation, listening to that. We obviously can't talk unless you ask us to, but listening to where that goes as you work your way towards a decision. Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
And, and thank you for that very comprehensive speech. Appreciate it. Yeah, okay. Let's see, what's next? I lost my paper. I think we're going to read the, the letters now. Yeah, all right, so we're going to divide and conquer today with these letters. We'll start with Dave Veach.
Okay, well, this letter is dated 10/27/2025 to the Chatham Zoning Board and Chatham Town Manager. I'm in favor of developing affordable housing on the Buckley property. However, I respectfully request that the zoning- However, respectfully request that the zoning board and town manager carefully review several important considerations with respect to the Penrose proposal. Size of buildings. After walking the Buckley property with Penrose representatives, who were very accommodating and informative, I believe it is important for the zoning board, Select Board, and town manager to do the same. Visualizing seven, eight, or nine large buildings on just three acres demonstrates how overwhelming such a development would be for the area. The proposed buildings do not aesthetically fit the landscape and are out of place for this location. Community input. The current proposal does not reflect the community's preferences for this property. Community has continually expressed support for fewer buildings, preferably owner-occupied, yet these wishes have not been taken into account. Overflow parking. With the Penrose plan potentially bringing 150 to 170 new residents and limited public transportation options, parking will be insufficient. Where will the overflow parking go? Water restrictions. Chatham is regularly subject to water restrictions. Adding as many as 170 people to this small area puts additional strain on the town's water system, exacerbating existing issues. Federal financing. In light of the current situation in Washington, it's crucial for both the town and Penrose to clarify how federal funding will affect this development. The project's success depends on such funding. There needs to be an explanation of how it can be secured, given today's uncertain environment. No one is asking for a perfect solution. We're asking for the right solution for everyone involved. Let's not create a congested living situation for the 150-plus people who would be living on this property. Please do not throw more money at this inappropriate proposal. Spending more time finding the right answer is the right thing to do. Our town deserves better and can do better. Thank you. Debbie Finerty, and her address is 28 Jesse's Landing.
Thank you.
This letter is from Brian Phillips, dated Thursday, October 30th, to Sarah Clark of the ZBA. Subject, ZBA Penrose Hearing, 10/30. To the Chatham ZBA, there are many interesting and peculiar things surrounding the RFP and procurement process of this project that I witnessed and have been brought up by myself and others during these ZBA hearings, such as, but not limited to, the circumventing of town meetings' approval for this project, the Affordable Housing Trust completely ignoring overwhelming public opinion, prevailing wage exemptions for Penrose, Rick Levitt not being allowed to participate as a member of the AHT on the Buckley Property Project, who is a man of great integrity and excessive executive sessions. In the June 20th, 2024 edition of the Cape Cod Chronicle, in the editorial titled "Our View: The Penrose Problem," it is requested that we urge Chatham Town Manager Jill Goldsmith, who is a procurement officer, will choose developers for the two parcels to strongly consider the HAC plan. Many of these, many of these things could have been overlooked, but, but not ignoring the request of Tim Wood, Tim Wood is a man, a great man, husband, father, and role model. Tim Wood is not a manual laborer, but he certainly has a strong, blue-collar work ethic and embodies everything that makes Chatham special, like prioritizing education, the arts, and charity. It would be very difficult, if not impossible, to find someone who cares about and has done more for their community than Tim Wood has done for Chatham. During the Governor Penrose project, Charlie Adams of Penrose was reportedly warned about inappropriate communication with board members during the open RFP process by the Orleans Town Manager. I am including attachments of an Orleans resident's statement and emails that coincided with Penrose pulling out of the Orleans project and the resignation of the Orleans Affordable Housing Trust Chair, Alan McLennan. I am also including an attachment of an email chain between Charlie Adams of Penrose and an Orleans selectman that is very interesting and would support the theory that Charlie Adams of Penrose attempted or engaged in inappropriate communication with Chatham board members and officials for this project, making the RFP process illegitimate. Thank you, Brian Phillips.
Okay. David Nixon.
I have a short one. This is from Lou Hyb. It is more and more obvious that these housing projects are bad for Chatham citizens and the future of our town. An undemocratic, undemocratic process has resulted in plans that primarily benefit business owners who employ low-wage workers. Many of these business owners are not Chatham residents. Increasingly, several of these are out-of-state corporations. We've been dealt a bad hand. Please do the best you can to maintain Chatham zoning standards, especially regarding density, crowding, building height, and preservation of Chatham's unique character as an historic New England village.
Thank you. Paul.
I have two letters to read. The first is dated October 29th, 2025, from Lori Nolan McCain. It's addressed to a number of Chatham offices. This is my second letter regarding Penrose Management Company applying in Chatham to develop at least two parcels for a total of 90 transient rental apartments under the cloak of affordable housing. This letter is mostly concerning 1533 Main Street, also known as the Buckley, Buckley Property, historically known as Garden View Cottages. How did we ever get here? The original plan for these Buckley lands, historically known as the Garden View Cottages, comprising of two parcels totaling 2.75 acres, was for 25 to 40 units of housing per the Chatham Select Board in November 2023, and no one ever said they had to be rental units. How are we now at 48 units? Money, 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 money. For Penrose Management Company, complete disrespect for the townspeople of Chatham. It's that simple. Regarding, quote, "workforce housing," unquote, one might go visit the Stone Horse Motel in Harwich, Mass. on Route 28. This is not a pretty place. The eyesore that it is, quantity, two, two and a half, or three-story buildings of 45 dormitories each, or 90 units total, and only 20 units which are zoned for year-round use is located on a historical road. This redevelopment is out of place. Once a sweet 44-unit motel, it was razed and has been replaced with what is today. I've sat in the 20th Space Parking Lot in recent weeks and witnessed three people coming and going in this development in the month of October 2025. Workforce housing has a three-month season in the summer. Zero Meeting House Road, South Chatham must be saved. Three-story towering buildings do not belong here. Back to 1533 Main Street in the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting scheduled for 2 PM October 30th, 2025. It is important to note that historical three- or four-unit cottage complex parcel 9D-4-18 entitled Zero Main Street on 2.49 acres plus one main house on parcel 9D-4A-1 on 20,075 square feet is being proposed to be developed by Penrose into a dense 48-unit rental apartment complex. It is obvious this acreage is located in an incredibly treacherous section of Route 28, nearly adjacent to the newly installed rotary. One can just imagine coming through the already challenging rotary and being rear-ended or much worse. Check these curb cuts and location, and common sense will tell you, Chatham, this dense plan is too dangerous. Plan on a fatality occurring. This is a very possible scenario in front of this housing development if it is proposed, if it is built as proposed. Please, Chatham Select Board and Town Manager, go back to your 25- to 40-unit aforementioned vision that you had articulated nearly two years ago. That is what you, Chatham Select Board, stated was your original housing development plan for this 1533 Main Street site. Rome. Rome was not built in a day. And as Chatham residents, we should not be forced to accommodate these projects with a suggested notion that they are behind the affordable housing eight ball. We are no farther behind than many towns in the state of Massachusetts. I'd like the press and the Chatham Affordable Housing Trust and others to stop suggesting we are bad students, residents, and neighbors. Build it right, or don't do it. I pray you don't greenlight this dense mess. Great things take a lot of time and patience, and the focus should be in large part building homes for home ownership. Chatham has done this before and should be focusing on that. We can do it again. The Penrose-proposed projects of Zero Meeting House Road and 1533 Main Street, aka Buckley, aka Garden View Cottages, are beyond dense, unsafe, and the three-story towers proposed at Zero Meeting House Road will destroy the seaside community. Penrose came onto the scene suggesting that they build a total of 60 units in total, spanning over Zero Meeting House Road and 1533 Main Street. They'll only build in Chatham if they can profit deeply. Otherwise, they have no interest. Scale their projects back so that if they don't like it, they should develop elsewhere. Penrose's 60 units cannot be, now be, 90 units. We can build a better ship with our local teams, and we should. Don't allow the unnecessary ruination of Chatham to become a reality. It is not worth it. Stop in the name of love. You are aware of the following much less dense projects on Cape Cod. 232 Upper County Road, Dennis, eight units in four buildings built on 70.75 of an acre. I believe two units are affordable housing. Wellfleet, the residences at Lawrence Hill, 46 units on nine acres, affordable housing, sustainably-designed complex, versus these incredibly dense Penrose Management Company proposals of 48 units in nine buildings, nine or 10 buildings, on 2.75 acres on 1533 Main Street, Chatham, and 42 units in eight buildings, six of which are three stories tall, on 3.571 acres on Zero Meeting House Road, South Chatham, some land of which may be unbendable, unbuildable. Why in the world are you even considering these dense housing projects proposed by Penrose? I realize 40B allows developers to try and stretch things, but these two projects are ridiculous. And by the way, Penrose does not want to assign parking at Zero Meeting House Road. I believe because when a rental applicant finds out their four-vehicle family will be awarded 1.45 spaces, said applicant will withdraw, and it should not be assumed our Chatham Police Department can and should handle resident disputes over unassigned inadequate parking. Sincerely yours, Lori Nolan McCain, prensed a Chatham resident since 1965. Second letter is from Cynthia L. Fucci, dated October 30th, 2025. She resides at 20 Jesse's Landing, Chatham. Dear members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, I appreciate the Board's continued diligence in reviewing these large, complex proposals. I am a full-time Chatham resident writing to register the following concerns and requests before any approvals are granted. One, rightsizing and site fit. The current density and massing appear out of scale for the locations and surrounding neighborhoods. Please require objective alternatives that reduce unit counts, preserve neighborhood character, and address cumulative impacts across both sites. It was noted in prior discussions that the Board requested reducing the number of apartments from 48 to 42 units, yet Penrose stated that could not proceed at that lower level. This suggests the project's viability may be dependent on developer profit or state funding formulas rather than on what is appropriate or sustainable for Chatham. The town should not be pressured into approving an oversized project simply because it supports the developer's financial model. Two, transparent pro forma, pro forma, cost assumptions, and third-party validation. The public has not yet seen the detailed financials supporting these developments. A one-page summary or high-level reference is insufficient. Before any vote, the full pro forma, including total development costs, subsidies, tax credits, developers' fees, management fees, operating expenses, reserves, and projected rents should be released for public review. The Board should also require independent third-party validation to verify that costs and profit margins are reasonable, that proposed rents align with market conditions, and that the project does not rely on speculative or overstated funding assumptions. Only with full transparency can the community understand whether these projects are financially justified and in Chatham's best long-term interest. Three, local residency eligibility clarity. There has been confusion about local preference and how it would practically work. Please request clear written policies, prensed, consistent with state and federal fair housing rules, unquote, prensed, detailing any local preference percentages, local lottery mechanics, wait lists, and compliance auditing. Four, community services and management plan. Testimony referenced a community center onsite, local onsite, social services. Consolidating services at one site may force residents at the other to travel for basic support. Please require an operations plan that shows, one, onsite staffing and hours at each location, two, partnerships for case management and resident support, and three, emergency protocols and clear points of contact for town departments. Five, parking, traffic, and access for care providers. Many residents may need home health services and frequent visitors. The plans should explicitly allocate safe, legal parking and loading for caregivers and service vehicles without spilling into nearby streets. Six, water utilities and seasonal constraints. Chatham faced watering restrictions this past summer. The developers should present a realistic, sustainable water use plan beyond any truck-water stopgaps, including conservation measures, landscaping choices, and contingency plans. Seven, long-term stewardship and accountability. Require a detailed asset management plan, prensed, maintenance standards, reserves, capital repair timelines, unquote, prensed, and a transparent process for handling complaints with reporting to the town on key performance indicators. Eight, cumulative impact review. Given two large sites, please ensure the traffic, school, public safety, infrastructure, and physical impacts are modeled together, not in isolation. Resident and tenant eligibility concerns. According to recent data, full-time renters make up only a small percentage of Chatham's year-round population. Given that limited pool, it is unclear how Penrose intends to fill these units under the, quote, "70% local preference," unquote, guideline. Will the balance be drawn from other Cape towns or potentially from outside Massachusetts altogether? The community deserves full transparency on tenant sourcing and eligibility criteria to ensure these projects truly serve Chatham residents rather than becoming regional or out-of-state placements. Additional housing and maintenance concerns. According to U.S. Census and Local Planning Data, only 10% to 12% of Chatham's full-time households are renters compared to over 80% homeowners. With such a limited rental population, it seems unclear how Penrose expects to achieve and sustain high occupancy under its proposed local preference model. Furthermore, I am deeply concerned about accountability once tenants occupy these properties. If issues such as mold, leaks, or poor ventilation arise, which are not uncommon in multi-unit developments on the Cape, will maintenance be handled promptly by onsite management or will residents be held responsible? Low and moderate-income tenants should not bear responsibility for structural or environmental issues that stem from design or upkeep deficiencies. The Board should require clear written standards of maintenance responsibility and response times before approvals are granted. These projects will set long-term precedents for Chatham. I respectfully urge the Board to continue hearings until residents can review complete documentation, including financials. Thank you for your service and for considering these requests. Sincerely, Cynthia L. Fucci, 20 Jesse's Landing, Chatham, Massachusetts.
Thank you, Paul. Lee?
Okay. This letter is from Elaine Gibbs, dated 10/30/2025. Unresolved issues that should be required of Penrose. One, we still haven't been provided with the actual lease for 1533 Main to review the actual lease for 1533 Main to review and accept. That should be a minimum requirement for such a significant project. Two, while Penrose surveyed the property long ago, 1533 still hasn't been staked with east and west boundaries and building setbacks so that we can see the massiveness of this project facing Main Street. Three, despite numerous members of the public providing photos and Nauset Green being used by Penrose as an example of their landscaping, we heard at the last meeting, the landscape designer has never even been to Nauset Green and Eastham, six miles north of the Orleans Rotary on a side street, six units per acre versus sixteen units at 1533, to see the results of Penrose landscaping five years later. Four, using occupancy/parking at Nauset Green to determine them at 1533 is wildly underestimated. Five, since Penrose will own the property and buildings, we still haven't gotten a straight answer what legal authority, if any, Chatham has if the property is being mismanaged in terms of maintenance, upkeep, upkeep, or tenant issues over the next twenty to thirty years. Six, we also need a straight answer about what, if any, legal authority Chatham would have regarding the property ownership or management if Penrose goes bankrupt or shuts down their Boston office. Seven, we shouldn't have to learn from a Brewster Community Preservation Committee meeting last week that Penrose made a fifteen-minute presentation of Chatham's affordable housing projects and will be requesting from us $100,000 from our CPC as a show of good faith. Eight, in his ten thirty letter, Attorney Singer ignored the ZBA's very clear directive to address the contradiction, A, Penrose's argument that they require sixty units to be profitable, B, they wouldn't have taken on the Meeting House topography challenges and size without 1533, and C, that combined there are ninety units suggesting they can in fact reduce the number of units at both Meeting House and 1533. Nine, in the same letter from Attorney Singer, I strongly disagree with Mr. Singer's contention that the ZBA may not conduct a pro forma review because the location, density, parking, et cetera, are not valid, in quotation marks, in terms of health, safety, environmental design, open space planning, or other local concerns that directly results from the size of the project on a particular site. Every one, every single one of these concerns has been raised repeatedly since the very beginning of this project by the various boards and members of the public. To make this argument this late in the process is, in my view, self-serving, unnecessarily provocative, and not collaborative in any way. This is the combative attitude we can expect if this project moves forward. I hope you will challenge this in the court if necessary. Regards, Elaine Gibbs.
Thank you, Lee. Steve?
I have two. The first is from Carol Gordon of South Chatham. It's dated October twenty-seventh, and it's addressed to the Zoning Board. I commend you on your due diligence regarding the affordable housing developments on Main Street and Meeting House Road. Since Penrose considers our two developments as one, I have been told a combined reduction in units in the Main Street Meeting House Road project is now being considered. If this is indeed what is coming to light, I endorse the reduction in housing and suggest thirty-nine units on Main Street and thirty-five units for Meeting House Road. This project has certainly garnered the public's attention, and I thank you for listening to our concerns and moving forward in a conscientious manner. The second one is from Jonathan Avery. It was received on October twenty-third. It's addressed to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and it's in reference to the Main Street comprehensive permit application. I am writing to express my support for the Penrose application for a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Law Chapter forty B to develop forty-eight affordable rental homes at 1533 Main Street. Approval of this application with a minimum of conditions will provide much-needed, year-round, affordable, and attainable housing for households with incomes of, from thirty percent to one hundred and ten percent of the area medium income. This development will provide a variety of housing alternatives ranging from one bedroom to three bedrooms in a mostly townhouse style. There have been considerable instances and comments by opponents referencing apartment buildings seem to convey the image of stacked flats and three-story buildings. Not the case. There are five fully accessible ADA units which will accommodate the range of family sizes and individual needs. I encourage the members of the Board of Appeals to carefully consider the great need for affordable and attainable housing essential to the future of Chatham. The proposed development of year-round rental homes benefit a range of incomes from lower wage tourism sector jobs to teachers and firefighters employed by the town, fishermen, and artists that are so important to the cultural and economic heritage of the town of Chatham. The proposed design, modified in a number of ways by Penrose in response to public comments, is a good compromise. Penrose is an experienced, successful developer of affordable housing with solid track record and the resources to construct and manage a property which will serve neglected members of our year-round community with top-quality homes to live in. This design includes an appropriate central green common open space for residents' outdoor recreation as well as an indoor community room for residents to gather and to host larger gatherings. These features are fundamental to having a livable and neighborly development for the future residents. I encourage all members to carefully review not only the negative comments but also the many positive comments and features and the consistent work by Penrose and their advisors to address the community concerns. This is a great opportunity to address woeful shortage of affordable and attainable housing so important to the future of Chatham. And it's signed by Jonathan Avery.
Thank you, Steve. And Virginia Fenwick.
Okay, one letter dated October twenty-first to Zoning Board of Appeals, Town of Chatham, from Jeffrey S. Dykens. I am unable to attend the ZBA meeting on October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and therefore am submitting written comments in advance of the hearing. I am writing again in support of the Penrose project known as Buckley Gardens, proposed for 1533 Main Street West Chatham. As we all know, and is consistently repeated, Chatham is in dire need of affordable and attainable housing. The three-acre parcel was purchased to develop affordable and attainable housing. Its purchase was supported by a town meeting vote. The leadership of the town negotiated a land disposition agreement with Penrose that was signed unanimously by the Select Board and the Affordable Housing Trust Board. These three acres are the largest parcels ever made available to our town upon which to develop affordable and attainable housing. Having researched town-owned properties and having solicited the private sector many times for parcels for town use, I ask if we do not go forward with this project at 1533, where are we going to meet the demand and need for such housing for our town? I believe ZBA concerns about streetscapes are overwrought. Traveling east from Missourvy's Shell, the streetscapes West Chatham currently enjoys are the Ocean State Job Lot, a small art gallery, the post office strip mall, Cream &amp; Cone, a commercial building, a medical office building, a smaller strip mall, a restaurant, the Shipahoy Strip Mall, Dunkin' Donuts, and a modest motel before one gets to the Buckley Gardens parcel. Most of these commercial complexes have parking in the front of the buildings, which is very much not preferred by village center pundits and planners. Moreover, many are also close to the road. There are apartment buildings behind Dunkin' Donuts. There are apartment buildings behind Dunkin' Donuts. One could argue that the Penrose development will be an improvement over what now exists in West Chatham, given its attractive Cape-style buildings on the road and the parking hidden behind them. The parcel is serviced by public transportation, near the bike trail and shopping, and enjoys sidewalks which run all the way to Harding's Beach and other recreational opportunities. Again, if not here, where the proposed development fits in with the surrounding neighborhood better than any other area in town? Where? I believe that the ZBA concern over the size of the trees is overwrought. Given discussion thus far, the ZBA is not applying the same standard it does to local developers who consistently clear-cut, regrade topography, and then replant smaller trees to create suburban-style, high-end housing. I agree that the ZBA needs to request a crosswalk as a condition of their approval. I believe the state will approve the request. However, knowing there are no guarantees, I remind folks that currently there are two crosswalks across both Barnhill Road and Route twenty-eight just to the west of the proposed project that would provide pedestrians, young and old alike, with access to the Harding Pocket Park and the north side of Route twenty-eight for recreation. I believe that concerns about the CCRTA stopping picking up riders and endangering citizens is also overwrought. The CCRTA buses stop all the time to pick up riders all along Route twenty-eight. I also believe that CCRTA would pull into the development to pick up riders if we were to reach out to them as in the past. The CCRTA has been very amenable to their stated mission of convenient access to public transportation and an overall increase in ridership. Denying Penrose the ability to develop Buckley Gardens will result in appeals, delays, and no progress in the town's stated goal of providing an increase in inventory of affordable and attainable housing. If Buckley Gardens is not approved, we lose the Meeting House project as well. Please do not lose these opportunities. Please move forward with reasonable conditions as you continue your deliberations and approve a project that all parties find palatable. We will then provide ninety units of housing that are so desperately needed in our town with a commitment to increase to our school population and in housing to support families and workers alike.
Thank you. Okay, I have a letter from George Myers, received on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. I reviewed the Penrose October thirtieth presentation, including the October twenty-three letter from Penrose attorney Andrew Singer. Although Penrose appropriately, though belatedly, addressed citizens' previously stated concerns regarding the size of the community building, there is nothing in the presentation that indicates Penrose is willing to consider a reduction of the unit count as suggested by the board. If anything, the Penrose presentation appears to distract from the real issue of concern for the board and for many Chatham citizens. The Main Street site is not adequate for safety and environmental purposes to accommodate forty-eight units of affordable housing. In the penultimate paragraph of his letter, Mr. Singer refers to a desperate need for affordable housing in Chatham, which is undisputed. But contrary to Mr. Singer's statement that density is the only way to move the dial, the need for affordable housing will not be resolved in Chatham by ignoring citizen density, safety, and environmental concerns and their preferences, but will create unnecessary resistance in the future affordable housing projects that could detract from Chatham's history and character. Mr. Singer points to town visioning of Main Street, the RFP, and its application as reflecting a need for density. Apart from Penrose's predictable emphasis on density in its application despite its acknowledgement of the tightness of the site, there has been widespread opposition to excessive density at virtually every forum and meeting of Chatham public bodies which have considered it. In fact, the Main Street RFP has a minimum twenty-six or twelve units per acre density, more in keeping with West Chatham proposed ten-unit-per-acre density. The Affordable Housing Trust was urged over and over by Chatham citizens to set a maximum density for both Main and Meeting House. It refused. Both RFPs state the number of units, thirty-six for Main, thirty-five for Meeting House, is based on a community engagement process conducted through twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, early twenty twenty-four. In contradiction to those community preferences, the trust added, quote, "and should be considered a base number with preferred consideration for additional density," close quote. Penrose took advantage of that contradiction to push as close to sixty-unit minimum as it could on too small of a site. Assuming the projects are or can be made economic with financial or other assistance as necessary, Penrose should be willing to accept thirty-six and thirty-five unit count citizens' preferences for a seventy-one unit total, still satisfying its sixty-unit minimum and providing safer, more environmentally appropriate affordable housing developments. Next, we have a note from Rick Levitt from West Chatham. I want to, and it was received on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. I want to compliment you for your patient, thoughtful, thorough review of Penrose's development plans, and this is to our entire board. The combined Main Street Meeting House project is the largest subdivision development in Chatham's history. A development of this magnitude deserves your careful review. I also want to compliment the Penrose design team. Penrose is uniquely capable of partnering with Chatham to help solve Chatham's unique affordable housing challenge. Penrose was awarded the contract to rehabilitate the old soldiers' home in Chelsea, where my former business, Chelsea Clock Company, is located. Both projects present unique developmental challenges. A combined seventy-five-unit Main Street Meeting House project compares favorably in size with Penrose's sixty-five-unit project in Eastham and seventy-two units in Orleans. It should be favorably received by the state's funding agency. Seventy-five new affordable housing apartments in a small town like Chatham is a major step forward in advancing both the state and town's affordable housing goals. I recommend placing a condition of seven apartment buildings with thirty-nine apartments for Main Street configured as shown in the attached thirty-nine-unit plan. This plan will open up the development, allowing more open space for residents and creating a safer, healthier, environmentally sound neighborhood. The plan provides internal traffic flow preferred by the town but lacking in Penrose's plan, and a one-point-eight parking ratio which could be further reduced based on Penrose's experience. Dumpsters are conveniently located for tenants away from neighbors as recommended by the planning board. Increased side setbacks of multifamily buildings from single-family residential neighborhoods meets criteria planning and design standards allowing more substantial vegetated buffers and preserving more existing trees. A similar six-unit reduction should also be a condition for Meeting House Road. I am aware of some local opposition to unit reduction, but respectfully ask those folks to recognize the substantial progress of seventy-five new affordable apartments for Chatham after decades of official neglect. Chatham is flexing its affordable housing muscle today. It would be an injustice to Chatham's history to build excessively-dense projects on inadequately-sized lots at odds with Chatham's unique character. Again, that's Rick Levitt of West Chatham. And now, I just want to ask Mr. Levitt, because I know you're right here. We have a combined letter from you and George Myers. Did you want me to read that as well?
No, I don't think you need to read that letter.
Okay, thank you. It's on the website if anybody's interested. Okay, now we have a note from Thad Eldridge, which is accompanied by two videos. And first, I'll read it. I was asked to create something visual for the ZBA to be able to understand how Building Ten will look. And I just want to note that this is before it was reduced in size for our consideration, but still. I have used an older drone flight, December twenty eighteen, with a very quick modeling of the proposed site. I did not receive elevations for the reduced Building Ten in time for my efforts, so you may get the October second revision. I did not have, nor did I request the digital files, so the placement is close enough for review, but not close enough to build from. This is from me, East Southeast LLC. I hope it helps ZBA reach their decision. I understand the difficult position the ZBA is in, and it saddens me that the Select Board members would pressure the ZBA to be derelict in their duties to simply approve a project that will have positive and negative impacts on our town for quite some time. I hope that Penrose will be a good member of our community. Again, this is from Thad Eldridge. Sarah, if you would. These are going to be one video with the building, the management building, and one without. And if you look right up there. I specifically asked for this not to play too fast because it makes me dizzy if it does. So that was the one with the building? Yeah, okay. That's probably enough. Okay, we can play the next one a little faster if it's possible. We do have the ability to. Okay. So that's the one with the management building. And now, we're going to play the one without it. Okay, thank you, Sarah. And now, for the last letter. This is from our police chief, Michael Anderson. Okay. Why am I missing the first? Did he have two letters? I'm going to read the first one. I think I lost the second one, but we're going to find it in a second. All right, so, thank you, thank you. Okay, so, when we first reached out to ask the chief for comments on the safety aspect of Main Street, he said, oh, number one, the PD likes the fact that the crosswalk is the farthest east on the map. If it was located further west, it would be closer to the roundabout, and there may be sign overload. At a minimum, the crosswalk should have the lighted warning and signage as shown in the attachment. And the PD would also suggest a petting, a head sign that warns approaching motorists that the crossing is ahead. And...
Yeah, just those?
Just that?
Yeah.
Okay, and then this one. In addition to the three items I mentioned below, I'd like to add the following. And this was received yesterday, October 29, 2025. If the lighted crosswalk was constructed the farthest east as allowed, it would, A, produce an added traffic calming measure, which was one of the original intentions for the two roundabouts. B, make it easier for pedestrians on the south side of the roadway to cross Route 28 to the north side, where there is an existing crosswalk, sidewalk, that extends east toward downtown. That wasn't a crosswalk, it was sidewalk. Eliminate the need to walk west for a distance and use the existing crosswalk at the Dunkin' Donuts to cross the street to then walk east. The existing crosswalk at Dunkin' Donuts is already in a busy traffic location. He also says that motorists and pedestrian safety are always a prime concern for the police department. And while final approval and authority rest with the state, the police department will work with the developer, town, and DPW to strongly advocate for this sidewalk. Respectfully, Michael Anderson. Okay. I think, okay, crosswalk, sorry. Okay, so that concludes our correspondences. And who wants to go first from the audience? Yes, please. Come to the middle, if you would, ma'am. Carol, the middle? Yeah, we changed it up a little bit today, just to confuse people. So you have two minutes, as you know.
Hello, we're in South Chatham. It's my understanding that if our ZBA does not approve the revised plan shown to us earlier, we revert to the original plan, which received many comments and concerns from Chatham citizens. Our ZBA board has proven to the town to think independently and will decide what's best for Chatham. To give the board an either-or situation seems to me unprofessional, unreasonable, and possibly bordering unethical.
Thank you. Okay, who's next? Anybody? Yes, sir, please. Come to the middle. Welcome.
Hi, Frank Messina, South Chatham. Just a clarification. The videos that we saw there were done by southeast or southwest?
Yes.
Okay. I think in the future, the zoning board might want to ask the applicant to provide that kind of a view of what it is. Because if there ever was an argument of what the heck this is going to look like and what it's going to do to South Chatham, I think that clearly showed it, the scale of the buildings, the monotony of the design. And the attorney said this has been going on for nine months, and, you know, nine months ago, they were told it was really not good. So what happened? What went wrong? I don't know what you guys are going to be able to do to stop it or to change it. It probably is going to go forward and go to the courts or something like that. But where did we go wrong? And I think we went wrong, the town of Chatham went wrong, in delegating as much authority, you know, to other people, to what we do. I mean, you know, yes, where we all need affordable housing, it's not just Chatham, it's all over the country. So what do we do about it? Chatham doesn't have enough land to solve the problem. But apparently, we had an RFP process that tried to squeeze as many units into a smaller space. And so I think this is not necessarily for the zoning board, but for the town, we've got to think differently the next time, if there is a next time for affordable housing. Hopefully, you will consider and try to put the pressure on them to try to reduce the scale. Just change the design, so everything doesn't look exactly the same. I mean, the attorney kept reading everything, what you have to do. I love when he tells you what you have to do. But he said it three times, design, design, design. That's a responsibility. And unfortunately, this design just does not meet the requirements of Chatham. And hopefully, you can have some impact and make them think about doing it again.
Thank you. Who's next?
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Rick Levitt, West Chatham. And could I have the screen? Scaling back the community building was a wise move, and we appreciate that. The site is too small. Scaling back some apartment buildings makes sense, too. The more people crowded on this small site, the more traffic threatening tenant safety. The 50-foot-wide internal road is wider than Route 28. Children will be crossing between parked cars to get to and from the common green. Overcrowding is a threat to health and the environment, too. Taxpayer-supported housing is intended to relieve overcrowded living conditions for working families. Forty-eight apartments with over 100 people where one lived before is overcrowding by any standard other than urban tenements. Chatham can provide housing without compromising safety, health, and the environment. Trimming back two apartment buildings and nine apartments does not make this project uneconomic. If anything, downsizing will increase the efficiency and the effectiveness of a full-time management and maintenance personnel. I encourage you to right-size this project as shown here. It has been carefully thought out and deeply researched. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Kimberly Robbins, South Chatham. Just a quick background, born and raised here. I own a business here. I love conservation. I love anything that we could do to, you know, keep any amount of nature possible. However, with that said, I fully support this plan with Penrose. I understand that, you know, any project like this, and again, I've born and raised here, I've seen so many projects come in front of this board and so many objections, you know, from on Kroll Road, Lake Street, everything. If you drive down Lake Street, and I think this was addressed at the last meeting, Kroll Road, you don't even notice anymore, anything. Like, I went to school there every day. I coached there all the time. It's something that you really become accustomed to as far, and I don't think it's eyesore or anything like that. And I just want to say, my contemporaries and my peers really do want something like this. I employ people. The housing, I had to, we bought a rental property so that we could house the people who work for us. Nobody can afford to live around here. I have, my stepmother is living with her niece and her family because they have, in such a small area, there's just not enough here. That's all. And to decrease it by the number that, you know, was originally asked for, 39 units or something, is important. I mean, it's too much to decrease it. And I think that Penrose has proven themselves in the town of Harwich and around Cape Cod. I mean, is anything perfect? No. But I think that they have really put a good plan in front of us. And then, secondly, the video, which was really interesting, it did look like it was like this behemoth.
Got your two-second warning.
Okay.
Conclusion.
Yeah, the conclusion is that video did take out all the existing buildings that are going to be blocking, and some of the trees and vegetation. So it did look very big in comparison to what reality it is. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Little hoarse today, but good afternoon. Ella Levitt, Barnhill Road. I also want to thank the board for your thoughtful and thorough review of this application. I hope you will place conditions shown in the 39-unit plan that we've just seen. First, downsize the management building as proposed. Increase side setbacks on the southern border by eliminating two apartment buildings. Create internal traffic flow as requested in the town's RFP by eliminating roadway and parking spaces that abut existing neighborhoods. Relocate dumpsters away from existing neighborhoods as recommended by the planning board. We have shown that these improvements to Main Street's planning and design comply with Chapter 40B. They do not make the project uneconomic. The town has indicated in the RFP its willingness to make up any funding shortfall projected by Penrose. Very important. This is a win-win for everyone. Town officials get 39 affordable, modern apartments for working households. Penrose gets more than its 60-unit minimum when combined with Meeting House Road. We all get, and we all want, an affordable housing development that can be supported by citizens and serve as a model for future affordable housing development so desperately needed. I have a handout of my request for conditions and the plan. Madam Chairman, may I pass it out?
If you could just hand it to our clerk, Virginia Fenwick, that's our usual... The next person shouldn't come until she sits down.
Thank you, Elaine Gibbs. The questions I had asked are not rhetorical, so I hope they'll get answered, because I've asked them before. Surveyed over a year ago, 1533 still hasn't been staked out with east and west boundaries and building setbacks, so we can all see the sheer massiveness of the project. That's pretty basic, I think. We still haven't been provided with a tenant lease specifically for 1533. The only one that we got is from Nauset. We are not Eastham, we are Chatham. And we still don't have a straight answer on the record what legal authority, if any, Chatham has. If the land and buildings that Penrose will own are mismanaged, whether maintenance, upkeep, or tenant issues, or if Penrose, that is for profit, goes bankrupt or shuts down their Boston office in the next 30 years, because that will impact us. So I hope that will be addressed. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Who's next? Yes, ma'am, please. In the back, yep. Welcome.
Hello, Carolyn McClelland, South Chatham. So, I'm very disappointed with the current plan, because I feel like we've given up too much. And I know the intention has been to squeeze Penrose into being, having a smaller footprint, but I believe you're doing that to the sacrifice of your occupants, and that too much has been given to the butters. This board, you guys are the gatekeepers to development in Chatham. Week after week, every other week, you sit here and you listen to applications for people requesting teardowns and build-outs on non-conforming lots, and you regularly issue permits for that to happen. Massive homes that have 5,000 to 8,000 square feet, eight bathrooms. I've never heard, on the meetings I've watched, I've never heard anyone ask, well, how is this going to impact Chatham's water? How is this going to impact the density of parking in your area? This is just allowed, and yet, you have a different scrutiny for our local development here. So I ask that you have consistency in how you apply the rules and regs, and that you don't squeeze our future applicants into having a lower quality of life for the benefit of the butters. Randy, when you and I last spoke, you mentioned that you had an issue about the streetscape, and that you want it to be more in historical character. We had, what was, 180 days, 120 days to work on that? You could have sent it back to Paul and his team with Union Studios to work on the architecture if you didn't like that. He could have done anything other than reduce the size and its use, because it has to be a management building, and it would have been nice to have at least two units, two pieces of, two spaces, flex spaces, for the 48 households that have to live there. It's not too much to ask when every other week you're issuing thousands of square feet for other people.
Thank you. Who's next? Yes, ma'am.
Gloria Hicks, Meeting House Road. We went wrong with this at the RFP. The RFP had absolutely no density limit whatsoever, despite outcry by the public, and that's where this all started to fall apart. So you can't blame Penrose for following the RFP. That's all on the trust. Penrose has made revisions to this, and nobody's happy with this project. Penrose has made revisions to this, and nobody's happy with this project. It's too dense, it's too high, you're going to hear the same thing when we go over Meeting House. But the bottom line is that they're not changing the density, period. We've heard that at every single meeting. And what I heard today was a game changer. What I heard today, and I'd like to know if somebody can answer if it's correct or not, that if the project as revised by Penrose does not go through with your approval, they're going to appeal to the state, and we're going to end up with the original plan. I can guarantee you that if Penrose goes to the appeal, they win. 99% of the time that these things go to appeal, they win. So you have a massive decision on your hands, and I don't envy any of you.
Thank you. Who wants to go next? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, please.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Shirley Smith, I live in Chatham. I just have a statement that I wanted to make. I'm sorry, Shirley Smith, Chatham, I have a statement that I wanted to make. How come the letter readers get as much time as they want? The people that give up their jobs, cancel their appointments, to come here to be in person, you're only giving them two minutes. I don't understand that, if somebody could explain that to me. And then also, after you get through, after listening to the people here and you go into your own discussion, if somebody could bring up, what year did Chatham decide that two acres was buildable? And if anybody can comment on it, why did they think that two acres was appropriate at that time? Because I think that's what got us into trouble. But just remember, two minutes, these people, they need more time than that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Who else wants to go? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Brian Phillips, 374 Orleans Road. I've put in, for an extensive OEAA evaluation to the FAA, which is an obstruction evaluation because of the close proximity to the airport, which is currently being investigated. There are a lot of zones, one way, protection zones, hazard zones, safety zones, noise ordinance regulations, and they all differ from Class 1, Class 2, Class 3 planes and military planes that go into the airport a lot. This project does not cater to police, firefighters, nurses, and teachers, most of which work summer jobs, because they make too much money, especially if they have a significant other. I think that this pro forma needs to be investigated because a lot of these numbers look bogus. A moratorium that the development cannot be sold for at least 20 years should be imposed. The foreclosure loophole that gets rid of 75% of the affordable housing units should be closed. If I could have three wishes that were conditions, they would be more trees and green space, so probably closer to 30 units, homeownership, and, most importantly, number one, equal access for people with mobility disabilities, so elevators in all the buildings. This project is almost entirely funded by state and federal funds, so this should be required. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the, yes, sir, please.
Yes, hi, Mark Janess, West Chatham. Just listening to all this, one issue or question or concern I have relates to density and with respect to kids as well, because I assume with 48 units, there'll be at least 40 kids or so. Where are all these kids going to go? You know, this is on Main Street, this is Route, Highway 28, it's basically a commercial street. So I just question, where do all these children wind up? And is this a potential safety issue? Because it's a very tightly packed area, right on a very busy street. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Leslie Schneibiger, 392 Main Street. I've been watching this closely for all this time, and what I think I've observed most of all is fear. I think there's a lot of fear in what's happening. It's new, it's different, it's unknown. We all have it, right? I've heard fear that it's too dense, I've heard that children are going to get hurt, children are not going to have anywhere to play. I fear this project isn't going to go forward. I fear it's going to be stopped for the fact of potentially hurting someone, but it's actually not going to give anyone housing. I think we all know that if we don't, if it gets conditioned too far, it's just not going to happen. It's going to walk away, and I think this has been a really well-done design, I thought so from day one. I personally think the management building is really well-placed, and was really well-sized, actually. I think it's relative to Dunkin' Donuts, to Larry's PX, to all the things you see on that streetscape. And it actually protected and buffered the green space for the kids to play in the back within this community. I think it's perfectly planned, it has a central community green space for that. It has housing that is beautiful in comparison to a lot of what we put in in new developments. It's really well-thought out. And I hope that this board sees that as well, and I hope that they can look beyond fear and find a good way to make this happen.
Thank you. Yes, sir. And welcome.
Good afternoon, David Whitcomb, lifelong resident of West Chatham. I've been reading your 40B book for zoning board of appeals on the subject, and I'd like to share some of the thoughts I have after reading that. As you mentioned earlier, the public hearing portion of the Penrose application for Buckley Gardens will end today. That gives the ZBA up to 40 days to deliberate and render a decision based on a majority vote of the five of you that are voting. The ZBA has three options. One is to approve as proposed, second is to approve with conditions, and the third is to deny the comprehensive permit application. Chapter 40B gives the HAC, the Housing Appeals Committee, authority to adjudicate appeals arising from the ZBA's denial or condition of approval of the Penrose project. Since Chatham has not met the criteria for the statutory minimum, we are not consistent with local needs, and therefore, I don't believe we qualify for a denial. I do not believe you folks are inclined to approve as proposed, so that leaves us with the third option. One of the advantages of the 40B is that projects can be negotiated. Penrose has made a significant, has made significant compromises during the public hearing process, but the elephant in the room is density. If the ZBA conditions its approval on a reduction of proposed units, and Penrose insists that 48 units are critical for the feasibility of the project, they have 20 days to file an appeal with the HAC. The Housing Appeals Committee's duty is to balance the local need for affordable housing with the degree to which the project threatens, and I quote, "public health."
Second warning, if you could just, in conclusion.
Wow, that two minutes went fast.
Yeah, yeah. In conclusion. What would you like to say?
The lack of, I'd just like to talk, the lack of affordable housing in Chapter 40B handbook will make it difficult to reduce density.
Okay, thank you.
On this project.
And if it's any consolation, we've read it numerous times, and we started to read it about six months before we began these processes. And we've had trainings with the attorney, and we've also watched several videos on this. So that should make you feel better.
Last page then, because.
Yeah, we're good, thank you. Thank you very much. It's good to hear people read the rules and understand what we're up against, so thank you. Who's next? No one? Okay, anybody online, Sarah? The hand up? Okay, so we're going to take a short break, and then we're going to come back and close the public hearing and take it from there. So, oh, actually, we're going to allow Penrose to rebut anything that they want after. All right, we'll see you in 10 minutes. Thank you.
I know it. One time I'll move. Oh, oh. What? Oh, I was. Oh. Oh, all right. We, we do that now and then. It's brainless as possible. I mean, it works. I usually have a contact with me. Oh, oh, okay. That, that.
Yeah, you know, you need a little something just to help.
(laughing). Oh, okay.[40.54][40.57](laughing). So Sarah says you guys are all set for Thanksgiving. This is great. Mr. Hammond. Yeah, uh, Linda's gonna have a special with Jeff. That's number one. You have been instructed to serve them food. Yes, they can only give what they would give them. Yeah, it was disgusting, man. He ran short of, you know, he ran short of a special. Hundred fifty mil. He had no more weight. He had no more breasts. He had no more mashed potatoes. No more ham. So now we gotta do. That's great. God, bring us grace. If he doesn't pay that, who's the line? And Linda says, okay, well, for business, I'm gonna go up and say, oh. How the hell you want to do it, man? You're in crap. Okay, I am. You have to walk around, I don't know. Yeah, and, you know, Jeff just invites all these weird, like, all those guys in the, we just, you know, I mean, come on. We don't need them. We, we soup like you guys. Tom's gonna come again. He might bring one of his, he's fine. You, you know, we can always, we don't need those guys to stand around doing this. They've already started calling, but, I mean, come on. Something is soon enough. You know? Well, that's good. No, and I'm glad, uh, Delia's gonna, it's wonderful for sure. So how are you feeling now at the hearing? Yeah. That's a real front. They, they can't make you and me do anything. You know, he, he's wrong. We can vote any way we want. And he can say, I demand a vote on what we submitted. We don't have to say a goddamn thing. They can ask if I leave, don't. Because it's in your face. Yeah, it, it's, you know, a- any threat. Well, you know, kind of negotiations, you get all in business-wise. Well, if you don't do this, we're gonna go talk to fidelity. Right. Yeah, it does. Oh, I mean, excuse me? Glad I'm just doing my part and communicating. Who's got the candy? Oh. Must've come from Sarah. Of course. Lee, bring that down here, will you?
Oh, there'll be everything. Won't be everything.
Let's see. Oh, look at this stuff, damn.
Wow.
Wowza. What do you got?
Went for the peanut.
Is that trash that Condi's handing? Yeah. Milky Way Snickers? Aren't they even?
Power, power came through.
You all had to read something.
Steve, what do you want?
Hey, what's the Snickers tagline for about, uh, well, here are how the sneakers, um?
What's this?
The creature of the world.
Well, you better have two because. I'm gonna find one, I want yet. Milky Way. Yes, we, we have one family of four children. They notify you around noon on Halloween, whether we're coming or not. And they tell you what time they're coming. And then they inform you, now so-and-so doesn't eat peanuts. So Linda, she said, well, let's go get, we were shopping the other day. She gets this gigantic box of Frito-Lay products. And I said, well, where's the candy bar? They're not getting one. They can have a couple of these.
No, they don't care for us. You can be poor this time. So, mild neighborhood, in Sudbury.
Oh, God.
Literally, we'd get like, two neighborhoods, a big neighborhood, and just like, a big neighborhood. Maybe like, open up a, an account, a bank. Only three, but we lived in this neighborhood. There was a newer neighborhood, and people would just muster their kids in there. It was a lot of fun, but, oh my gosh. And there was an arms race between all the neighbors on, who, who would give like, the best candy out.
Well, Mark's got his own supply, thanks to Breech. He brought in a bunch of stuff.
And, uh, Candyman had a, a float that was supposed to deliver, uh, for, uh, ski and everything.
It's really hot in here. Even for me, and I'm always.
For a while, I, I was not on the float, but I followed behind.
Not in a good way.
Bucket full of, you know. And what I, just to go down, going down that corridor, first of all, it's just, like, the kid, the kid, and their hands are all out, you know, you're just, and then you see him, you know, this kid, the kid is getting, he'd run down, further up, block up, and see him with the candy.
That's to give them the sugar. No, no, it'll last a while.
It is hot.
Ah, who fell asleep?
We'll put it, we'll put it over in your car.
Thanks.
That way, if, uh, if you guys need anymore, I'll just pass the bag down.
Yes, but remember, always show the bag, show you get.
Oh, I know. So maybe.
We're gonna be starting up again in a minute, just so you know. Oh, we are actually on. Okay, we are back. And, um, people aren't aware, we're back, folks, so if everybody could sit down and at least, um, not talk, that would be awesome. So the next thing we're gonna do is we're gonna hear anything that Penrose wants to rebut from all the, uh, information that they received. And then I'm gonna ask the, our attorney, J. Talman, to respond to a couple of, um, points, and then we're gonna close Pup Carrying, so.
If the board has any questions.
Oh, yes, if the board has any questions, yes. Of course.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I only have a very brief response to what you heard, uh, since you've heard a lot of it repeatedly. Um, the statement I made about if the board chooses not to, um, vote to approve the project, uh, that the applicant respectfully asks you to vote on the original plan. That was not said to gain leverage over you. It was said because the concessions that the applicant has made, um, you're getting rid of the fitness room, getting rid of the multipurpose room, squeezing the development in and improving the buffers, making the green space in the middle smaller. They did all that, uh, to try to work with you and the neighbors, uh, even though they feel, and I've said this, this is not a secret, that they feel that it does impact the quality of life for the residents and their ability to professionally manage. They did it and they were willing to do it, provided if, you know, in, in a sense of cooperation and negotiation, that the project was gonna be approved. If you ultimately, during deliberations, aren't going to go that road, then they ask to go back to the original plan because on an appeal, they would like to promote what they believe is the best for the residents and their ability to manage. Thank you.
Okay, um, so questions from the board? Paul?
I, uh, I have a few things that I wanted to, uh, just clear up because I'm still doing the factual, uh, information that I was looking for. I, I see in the, uh, latest, uh, letter that you've submitted that there is going to be a will, a well installed. I had asked, um, at I think either the last meeting or the meeting before that, if you would run the landscaping plan by the conservation officials in, um, Chatham. Uh, and whether in their view that was something that was consistent with what we were trying to do in Chatham.
That's a good question. I think that is something we did not do, not intentionally, I think, until you just remembered, it might've just been, we, we, for real can respond to it, was not intentional.
We had not done that, um, post, you, I guess, mentioned that in a previous hearing, but prior to submitting an application, we gave our plans to the conservation committee who reviewed them and provided us with their feedback.
I, I know that, uh, that you had, uh, you had mentioned that the last time, that you had submitted the plans to conservation, uh, before submitting the whole application, but, um, I mean, there have been a number of changes and, uh, one of the issues that I talked about, uh, is that, uh, Chatham has been concerned about the use of water and, uh, the, uh, need for native species as opposed to invasive species and the need for drought-resistant planting. I know that some of this stuff is included in what you provided. I do know that, uh, I don't believe under Chatham's regulations now, uh, you can use, uh, water from, uh, the town, uh, for purposes of irrigation, but, um, uh, a well would be required, and I understand that you're doing a well, uh, but at the same time, uh, we're dealing with the same aquifer. And, uh, there's been a lot of discussion, uh, in Chatham about the fact that, uh, we've been, uh, low on water and we've been restricting the use of water. I'm wondering whether it makes sense to have a landscaping plan which is designed to, uh, use a well and irrigation, uh, under those circumstances.
Yeah. Hi, Mark Werfel, um, with Crowley Cottrell Landscape Architecture. The design and the plant selected has not changed appreciatively since, uh, the review with the Conservation Commission. The plants that we've selected are all native to Cape Cod, um, and are designed to be supported on the site without irrigation. The conversation around watering, um, that has happened in past meetings has been about establishment. So whether that water to establish those plants comes from a well or trucks, um, that, that's what the discussion has been about.
All right, well, uh, maybe you can clarify that for me then. As I understood it, uh, well and irrigation are now being proposed, originally when you, you made your proposal, there was no well and there, and there was no irrigation as such. It was designed to be temporary establishment of these plants, and then they would take off on their own. Uh, that's no longer the situation. Now you're looking at irrigation and using a well in order to maintain the property?
The well would be for establishment.
So that would only be for a limited period of time?
Yes.
And how long would that be?
Uh, typically a year to two years.
So you're talking about using an irrigation, putting in an irrigation system that would go to all of the new plantings?
Uh, it would be a temporary irrigation system, so usually that's done with, uh, water bags, uh, soaker hoses, sprinklers, that kind of thing. And the period would be different based on, um, the plant areas, so something like a lawn might be six months, uh, where the trees can take two years to establish.
So you're anticipating a lawn?
Yes, there's lawn, there's both, um. See if we can bring up the plan.
Sarah, maybe are you able to?
Thank you.
There we go, that, yeah, that one. It's not a lot.
So there's both, um, mown lawn, as we would normally see in the central area and some of the parking lot islands. Uh, and, uh, on the periphery, we do a, uh, kind of lower management lawn that's mown less, uh, just to be a little bit more environmentally conscious that we're not mowing it every single week.
So the mowed lawn is an irrigated lawn?
Not, not permanently, just to establishment.
So after, after the initial, uh, six months or one year, at, at that point, the irrigation would no longer be provided to the lawn?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's correct. This, the design has always been for no irrigation. That's reflecting the species of plants of respect. It was just the temporary establishment, and I believe the concerns was using the water hookups from the buildings for that establishment. And a board member suggested the well. So that's why we're proposing a well, uh, to help water for that establishment period. So, um, it's not permanent underground sprinkler systems.
And the board had suggested a well last time, uh, because A, you can't tap into a, you know, town water, and, and also, uh, there was concern about having watering trucks coming to and from the property. You know, if you don't have a well on site, you're gonna have to get the water from somewhere. And so in response to the board member's concerns, that's why the temporary well was suggested.
I see. I didn't realize it was a temporary wall, a well, uh, and, uh, this plan with respect to, uh, how you address the, uh, landscaping and watering and so forth, is that in writing in something? Where, where do we look to, to see that that's what the plan is?
Well, I would sugge, we don't have a written plan that we submit to you, I'd suggest you put that in as a condition in your decision, that there shall be a temporary irrigation well, you know, for the purposes of establishing the lawn and the plants and the trees, and shall be discontinued respectfully or respectively after establishment of the, each vegetation is, is taken.
One of the things I'm trying to get a feel for is how much we need to put into our conditions that we may be assuming that you're doing based on your representations. And how much of your representations we can rely on regardless of whether we put it into a condition.
Well, I will tell you after having, you know, represented Penrose on multiple projects across the state, that I would put faith in their representations. If as a board you want to add specific conditions on those things that are most, you know, important to you, then absolutely, that's something you should do.
Okay.
And is, is the condition being contemplated, a condition that the landscape can never be watered or irrigated after establishment?
Well, I'm not sure what the condition would be, but I guess I, what I would like to know is what, what your intent is, and then we can craft it to the extent that we think it'd need to, uh, based on what we understand to be the town policies. But, um, when you started with the idea of there not being any kind of a well or irrigation system, um, then there would never have been any watering going on.
No, that, there would have, we mentioned before that we'd bring watering trucks or if certain areas of maintenance would use, hook up to the bu, a building with a hose from a spigot and hit certain areas. But, um, it was primarily would rely, especially in the trees and lawn, on the, on the contractor to establish those water trucks and gator bags.
And based on your experience, uh, it's possible to have a, uh, an attractive-looking landscaping without that kind of permanent irrigation system here?
Yes.
Okay.
It's more difficult, but that's what we've designed in previous places, um, and I know folks don't always like to hear about Village at Nauset Green, but there's an example where we had designed that with no irrigation.
All right.
And I've.
You designed it that way, but that wasn't the way it was implemented, right?
No, we added, uh, irrigation in some areas after, um, the landscaping was destroyed because it was planted and then we were imme, immediately hit with a drought. But I believe that, uh, irrigation system was used for a year, year and a half.
Is that irrigation system still being used now?
I don't know the answer if it was, if it's been used this past summer. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. There were a couple of other small items that I wanted to cover. Uh, we, at one point, we talked about the color of bu, of buildings that were going to be built. I'm not sure how that was resolved.
We, Paul can address that if you want, we had submitted detailed color charts, chips, he had outlined the different buildings, different doors, the different siding, so you have all of that. That would be part of your, you'd be, your decision would say, refer to X, Y, Z plans, and those plans, and Paul can add to that, will reflect all of that that we already submitted to you.
I, I recall that there were, uh, plans submitted that showed different colors for different buildings. And then there was a fair amount of feedback from the board about the fact that perhaps actually the white, uh, facade was, was the appropriate one. I didn't know where it ended up.
I, I think that's exactly where we ended up. It was not, we never came back to a conclusion by the board or the applicant, and we wanted to discuss on other.
So that's another condition that we should, we should add?
Well, it's something you should decide.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right. There also was talk at one point about some perimeter fencing. Where did we end up on the perimeter fencing?
Uh, we had rejected that suggestion. We think it sends the wrong message. We don't like to fence in, uh, low-income and affordable housing and workforce housing. We think we've designed a beautiful site with beautiful buildings that doesn't need to be hidden. And, um, we feel it's, comes across as exclusive, um, for the residents that live there, so.
Just the fact that there's tremendous amount of topography and screening, natural screening around the property.
I understand that, yes. And that's been increased, I think. We talked about exterior mechanicals, uh, and, uh, I think at the time that we raised it, uh, there was no clear concept about where the exterior mechanicals were going to be, other than the fact that they're going to meet setback requirements.
That is correct.
And would that be in front of or behind the buildings?
Most likely on the side and/or the back.
On the side or the back?
Yes.
Would it look like Nauset Green?
Well, they'd be on stand-ups on concrete pads, each individual unit.
Well, in looking at it at the Village in, uh, in, uh, in Eastham, uh, they appear to be, uh, almost metal holders for the air conditioning units or the mechanical units. I didn't know whether it's the same concept here.
You, you mean from the ground up?
Yes.
Or wall-mounted?
From the ground up.
Most likely because of there, you want them up above the grade, uh, out of the snow.
Okay.
I, I believe one small difference here, um, I think at Village at Nauset Green, there were some, uh, of those units, um, on the front, on the front side of some of the buildings, where here it would be, um, putting them, uh, to the rear of the buildings.
Yes, I mean, there are some certainly on the front side of the buildings there, they're very visible. And I just wanted to get a feel for whether that was going to be the case here. We talked about parking, uh, at one point, and, uh, we were talking about, aside from the number of spaces and so forth, the availability of using, uh, parking for your work vehicle. If you were, uh, a fisherman, a landscaper, uh, um, a flooring person, you might have a van or a, uh, pickup truck that you use in your business that you also use going back and forth to business. And, and the sample lease, lease that we looked at, uh, seemed to prohibit that. I'm wondering whether you've thought about how you're going to address that issue.
Yes, I, I think we won't prohibit, um, vehicles that will be able to fit in the parking spaces. I think if it's a vehicle that does not fit in the parking spaces, uh, I think that would be an issue.
So it would be an issue if you had a pickup truck and a trailer behind it? Wouldn't necessarily be an, an, an issue with the pickup truck itself. Landscaper with a pickup truck.
Yes. Yes, and there are some instances where, uh, applicants can, um, submit for reasonable accommodation. And that may be an issue if, if something, somebody needs something for the terms of their employment, where they would need to take, uh, or find a space to provide a vehicle. Sometimes maybe it's necessary for a medical pickup or something. That would be the avenue for those specific incidents, incident, um, where there was an applicant that had a vehicle that would, that wouldn't normally fit in the standard-sized parking spot.
Okay. I think those are the only questions I had. I will come back to some of the issues, uh, perhaps in a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Who, um, Lee, do you have questions for the applicant or for the attorney right now?
Not right this minute, no.
No, Steve, do you?
Um, I, I, I know you've talked about this in the past, but could you, one more time, go over the, the personnel model for us? How many people are gonna be at the site and/or shared with the Meeting House Road site?
Sure. So this staff would start with a, uh, full-time property manager onsite, um, a full-time, uh, maintenance onsite, a, um, part-time admin, so assistant property manager slash leasing agent. During the initial lease-up, we'll, we'll have an additional leasing agent there temporarily, so that at one point, there'll likely be three office folks during the lease-up. But then once stabilized, it would be one and a half persons, um, on the office side. There would also be a, um, part-time resident service coordinator, supportive service coordinator, which at Penrose, we call our impact coordinators. They would, and that person would be shared with some of our other projects, so, so that's one of the sh, shared costs. And for the maintenance, there, there would be likely a shared, um, maintenance tech under the maintenance director, um, that would be shared between this property and Meeting House. So, um, you know, depending on a Meeting House goes, that might not be that second maintenance person. In those instances, um, when the maintenance person is out or vacation, we pull in maintenance from Eastham or Leans or where. In those instances, when the maintenance person is out or vacation, we pull in maintenance from Eastham or Leans or Wareham or Harwood. So we have coverage. And the coverage is full-time.
So the number of people that you just listed, is that typical for a 60-unit development?
Yes, for affordable housing, which is typically has more staff than conventional market rate apartments where it might be one property manager for 50 units and one maintenance for 50 units. Because there's, because we'll have a supportive service person involved and the assistant property manager also helps with all the compliance aspects, which folks working in a market rate apartment development don't have to handle.
Okay, and if the Meeting House Road project were to proceed, would you have an equal number of people there?
Yes, that would, yes, we would. And it would be the shared maintenance tech and a shared resident service coordinator and the shared assistant property manager.
Okay, thank you.
Jenny, questions for the attorney or for Penrose or anyone?
Any of us.
Anybody?
So I had a question about the irrigation well as also. I didn't realize either that it was temporary, so I'm glad that we confirmed that it's not. That it's, I'm sorry, that it would be temporary and it's not permanent. So, so we're not, we're not going to have it be ongoing through the project for, you know, I believe one of the reasons why the the other sites don't maybe look as lush is because they're not, you know, they're not, they're watered enough to not die, but they're not watered enough to flourish. So I'm a little disappointed that, so you're planning to go to the, build an underground well that'll just be temporary for two years? Only in the trees in the front or the whole complex?
Mark, you want to help with this? So I guess maybe we're, I guess confused what the board is looking for from us. I mean, we came with a plan with no permanent irrigation system. And there's drawbacks to that. You know, it's difficult to get the flowering plants. There's as many plants in the spring. But that's usually how we design these to be very cost efficient using the native drought resistant plantings, which is also encouraged by the state. And so I think that the irrigation well, if my memory is correct, came up because of the temporary establishment and the greater need for water during that time period. Once we finished construction.
And the fact that you couldn't use town water for this.
Correct.
Was the other, yeah.
And so, so we proposed an irrigation well. I guess we hadn't thought through whether that would not be able to be used in the future. I mean, the main intent of that was for the establishment. That's what we needed the water for. But if the, if the well's being built and put in there, is there a concern from the board for future use of it? That it would have to only be temporary?
Can I say something Jenny about that while we're on the well? So in your response to us, in number two, irrigation well. The applicant will install an irrigation well to handle landscape watering. So that seems pretty clear that you say that you'll install a well to handle landscape, you know, watering. So it doesn't say temporary or for startup. So what if we were to ask you to condition it into perpetuity? So that we can have good-looking landscaping there in the HPDC?
I think, you know, for that we'd be willing to do if that's what the board wants. I think we can do that.
We were trying to, and that was, I didn't put the temporary into the letter, so I apologize for that. Trying to address the concerns of the board about conserving water. As Rio just said, if you want it to stay, it can stay. It's in the ground. But it's really a board decision at that point.
Oh, okay. Well, good to know that you're open-minded with that. Go ahead Jenny, I apologize.
No, no, that's, I'm glad you chimed in. Would it be for just the front, like the trees or would it be for the whole? I mean, I guess you've got trees in the back and everything. It'd be for everything. Okay. I originally thought, Mark, it may have been just for the newer, larger caliber trees, which will really, that's more substantial investment. So you're trying to establish those. But really it'd be for the whole, the back too?
Yeah, we have to do the same level of watering on all the plants for establishment.
Okay.
So we would utilize the well for that.
So it is not just the front. It's for all of them. Okay. I also had a question about parking. So did we land on Rio 152 for parking? Okay, so that's the current. And then I know it's been asked several times and it's been answered several times by you that you do not like the assigned parking. But it does continue to come up. At 152, which I know we continued to reduce the parking because we were improving the setbacks. And I have made the point that without changing units and density, you're getting, you know, the offset is we now have less parking. So 152 was, I think, agreed by the peer group, right, Mr. Singer? Okay.
Yeah, peer review looked at it was between the standard of 1.3 to 1.6, I think was the IT standard.
Okay, so it's 152. But, you know, your number of units are, I think we have. Yeah, we have 32 units are either three-bedroom or two-bedroom, the majority being two-bedroom. So if we have that many units out of, you know, out of 48. That I just wondered if assigned parking could be for at least one dedicated spot for those, for the 48 people. So then there'd be essentially, you know, the less than one for whoever, you know, was coming. But at least every unit, there'd be 48 assigned units out of.
We can do that. If the board wants one assigned. I mean, I think it's, and I've said it before, I think, you know, we think it's more efficient use of the spaces that works. If spaces are free and available and not assigned because.
You know, Rio, when you have said that, I have agreed with that too, thinking, yeah, that's, it just kind of works out. It's sort of like a restaurant that has, takes reservations and one that doesn't, you know, you can. But because it has come up several times and because we have also been consistently reducing the parking number, I wanted to ask if that was something that would be possible.
So that would be one per unit?
That's, that was my idea. Because you do have, you know, you have 26 units that are two bedrooms, six that are three. So there's the 32 units. So it's a, it's a large number of units vis-à-vis your total units. And then the one bedrooms of 16. That doesn't mean they won't have more than one person staying there because the estimate of people staying here, I think you've said it, is 95 to 100.
Correct.
So.
Well, 1.2 to 1.3 persons per bedroom.
So I think that the one, two and three bedrooms should get a dedicated parking, but it would be.
We can do that.
Okay. I'd like to hear what other people say, but I wanted to bring that.
If the rest of the board agrees with you, I just want to be very clear, just in my mind, you'd have 1, 48 spaces would be numbered 1 through 48 and one would go with each unit. The remainder of the spaces would be visitor slash common use slash not assigned.
Right. I mean, it has to be because you don't have, we don't have enough parking for everyone to have more than, yeah.
And it's not needed.
And I mean, if you think that's complicated, it'd be really complicated to have, okay, if you have a two-bedroom, you get this. If you have a three-bedroom, you get that. So I think that's a positive step. Okay. I have a question. So you heard at the beginning of our hearing that from Mr., from Attorney Talerman, that we were unable to get the professional pro forma reviewer. And I am not a professional pro forma reviewer, but I did take a look at it. We didn't read the letter that Mr. Levitt and Mr. Myers wrote, but they sent one in for this hearing. We, the board had an opportunity to read it and anyone can read it that is going online. As Randy mentioned, it was sent in. So, so knowing that we weren't going to get this expert, I just, and again, I want to preface, I'm not the expert, but I wanted to just look it over. Which I did. And I have a few observations. So Mr. Levitt and Mr. Myers in their letters, they talk about overcoming two primary hurdles. I'm going to try and keep this really high level and just use a few numbers, I promise. So two hurdles. Those two hurdles were a funding source and the operating budget. Okay? I want to start with the operating budget because that was actually in my estimation, and actually I think in Mr. Levitt's summary as well, that that looked good. Meaning that the pro forma says that cash flow of $54,000 annual is staying the same from 48 to 42. So from an operating budget perspective, that's good news. No change in the operating budget. Because if there was a change in the operating budget, it could make it uneconomic and that is, you know, that's the hurdle. So hurdle number one, operating budget appears to be a check. And that's a question for you. You don't have to answer it right now, but that's a question for you guys. If that's a true statement or not, I think I wanted to start there. All right, that's number one. Number two, the other hurdle is the operating, I'm sorry, the funding source. And this is, and like I say, it's more complicated, but it gets into a couple of numbers, but I can keep it high level. Okay, so the funding source, the pro forma says that there is a loss in construction funding. And there's a bunch of numbers here, but I've aggregated them. 3.4, just anchor, 3.4 million is the loss that your pro forma from 48 to 42. Okay, but there's a savings because your costs are reduced. Okay, so that's offset by savings, but it's only 2 million. So the difference is the 1.4. That's on the pro forma. That's what you in a nutshell are saying is your gap or your shortage. Okay, 1.4. So I just, in examining the, kind of the underpinnings of that funding source, that 3.4, had a couple of questions. First of all, the, there's, so that number is made up of the state credits, the income credits, the federal funding. There was no change to federal funding. There was a change to the state funding, but not to federal. I don't understand that, but that was something I observed. And then there's a change to loans, okay, the loan category. And there are two categories of loans, permanent loans and other funding sources. The permanent loans was very curious to me because that went down from 4.4 to 3.1. It went down 1.3 million, the permanent loan. Okay, on its face, that seems fine, but that's a 30% reduction in the permanent loan when your reduction of units from 48 to 42 is like 12%. Now, I don't know, again, I'm not the expert, so I don't know if that's a correlation, but that was an observation that I thought was curious. Why would there be such a delta to, to that number? The, I'm talking specifically Rio about permanent loans, which is part of that funding source, that 3.4 funding source that we were trying to get to. Okay, so that was question number one. 30% reduction in the permanent loans, but only a 12% reduction in units. And there, I'm sure is a good explanation of it for that, but I would like to know what that is. And then the other question I have for the pro forma is, we talked about the loss of the loans, okay? It's almost $2 million. It's 1.9. It's almost $2 million. And my question is, in both the RFP and the LDA, there's specifically language that says the town shall provide, also provide assistance and support to the designated developer, this is in the LDA. In securing other financing such as grants, tax incentives or other available funds, if needed. This was in the LDA. And a very similar item was, offer was in the RFP. Town of Chatham is willing to entertain applications from the selected developer for funding and tax incentive arrangements as well as submitting applications for infrastructure grants to support the development. Now, I don't know the details of that, but it seemed to me maybe a willingness by the town to assist with, I'm not saying giving more funding, but assist with opportunities for Penrose to acquire more funding. So the question is, did Penrose take any steps to attempt to make that, that 1.9 up? So that, because if you could make that or close to that, you'd cover your 1.4. Do you see what I mean? So since one, I said I wasn't going to give a lot of numbers and I have, but 1.9 was the, was the number for creating a deficit that contributed to your 1.4. And maybe you can't raise that money. Maybe you can't raise all the money, but was there an attempt to raise any of the money to try to cover that? To get to the 1.4 deficit that is the reason why you can't go to 48 to 42? That's the other question. Only two questions. Sorry, that was a lot. Okay.
All right, so starting with the first question, I'll start with the operating budget. You said, oh, you end up with the same cash flow. So that seems like there's no problem there. It's by design, we end up with the same cash flow. The cost per unit on the reduction is much higher. And we have to have a certain amount of cash flow. It basically is a buffer. Because if some costs go way up, snow plowing or something, we can't all of a sudden default on the first mortgage. So we need to have some type of buffer, especially with much smaller unit projects. So what that means is that we're supporting a much smaller loan. That, and that gets to your second part. Because the NOI is much smaller in the reduction of units, right? But the reason the cash flow is the same is because the permanent debt service was reduced so much. Which is why you see it.
Right, equal, yeah.
Yes. So, so I think that answers your first and second question, which was, you know, is the operating budget seems like it works. Well, it, it doesn't work in the sense that it doesn't allow us to raise as much debt as we need to to cover the development costs.
Okay.
So.
Can I also, I also just like to put on the record, because I'm, you can ask whatever questions you want. I'm concerned with any reference to the Myers-Levitt analysis because it is clearly not a professional analysis. It's biased. Every plan Mr. Levitt submits conveniently provides more trees, not open space next to his house. So I'm concerned with the board relying too much on that numbers, which only because you mentioned it Jenny.
No, and I want to clarify what, I was always thinking I could lean in a little bit to the pro forma, but knowing we were going to have a professional, I stayed back. Knowing now that we're not going to get the professional, I wanted to spend a little time on it. And I'm only referencing Mr. Levitt's letter because he and Mr. Myers have, I think it maybe even is the second time that some of those responses to that. Because the pro forma was sent in a month ago, Mr. Singer, right, September 30th? So there's been, I think there's been some feedback, some feedback on it. But the numbers themselves that I was quoting were in the pro forma. I just wanted to leverage the 54 because that was in the letter.
And I just want to add that Virginia Fenwick is a CPA, so she's able to look at it with some type of professionalism where I, it would be a different language for me. But we have a wealth of.
I don't work in housing.
Strategy. You know, we have a lot of talent on this board and that's her talent, so.
No, absolutely. Not challenging that. Also though, and I said this at the last meeting, please recall that, you know, the board's ability at the end of a process to look at a pro forma is if there is a stated concern that a reduction in density would somehow solve or resolve. And so if reducing a building in six units, the question I ask the board to consider is what would, what life safety issue would six fewer units? And you don't have to answer this question, but it's for, you know, for you to think about. What would that solve? We respectfully submit with the peer review and all the studies that it wouldn't change anything. That's all I was trying to have on the record.
Understood. And this is just a comment, which I just want to make since you brought that up. You're right, maybe it doesn't link directly to safety and to the specific legal criteria. But we have heard from day one over and over and over from residents, from folks writing in, listening, paying attention to this, that they want a smaller development. And, and so, you know, I understand that legally maybe you don't have to do that, but it would be nice to have, be responsive to that. Okay.
Well, if I could also just say, you've also heard numerous, numerous people in writing and in testimony, oral testimony, support the density, support the project. So, yes, you've heard a lot of outcry, and you've heard a lot of support. The board, and Frank Messina likes telling me, I'm telling you what to do, and I'm not. I'm just sharing what the legal standard is for the board to be reviewing. All I'm saying is that when you're looking at a comprehensive permit, you're supposed to be looking at ABC. That's all.
No, I understand. And you have, you have stated that well, and previously, a few times. Okay, so those were two questions. Oh, did you answer the question about the Penrose exploring?
I wasn't really sure. I mean, we have a, we have the 48 unit plan, and we have the 42 that shows the gap. I mean, there's, I'm not sure what, what your question was in terms of...
Well, I think in the spirit of trying to work with the board and the questions we had about reducing the number of units, which is, by the way, not my opinion or my, it's what, I'm a vessel for what I'm hearing our town want. And so, that's why I've brought it up several times. And so, because that has been something that's been brought up, Mr. Adams, over and over and over at every hearing, when we got the pro forma and it showed the gap, we take that at its face. If, you know, in the spirit of partnership, hey, we know they'd like to have less, you know, fewer buildings, we have this gap, would there be a way to try to cover the gap? That's my question.
Yeah, I mean, no, we haven't, we haven't had any of those conversations. I mean, because, you know, we're, we're trying to move this along and get, you know, get into an application, but, you know, no, there hasn't been...
But by, by trying to find other sources and maybe being able to reduce it a little bit in, in the partnership, it could be moving along. That's...
And also, please recall that through the RFP process, which was a public extensive process, the initial pro forma was provided, the initial pro forma was reviewed, not only by the town, but also, I believe possibly, by town council had seen it. And throughout that entire process, there was nothing secret. You know, Penrose didn't come in and say, I'm going to ask for 60 units and reduce down to 48. They went with, maybe in hindsight, not the best decision, they went with the base number that worked for them. And that, and that's what's before you with the 48 units.
I think that's all the questions I have right now. I might have more later.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nixon, you said you had a question for Jay Tallaman?
I do, actually, I can start with Attorney Singer. So, correct me if I'm wrong, you kind of gave us three choices, voting, all right? We're talking about down the run when we get to voting. And we can pull the lever that says no. We can pull the lever that says yes with the following conditions. And then, there's another lever over here on the left, that if you don't like the conditions that we put on it, then you want us to vote again, just yes or no, based on what you originally submitted. Am I correct? Is that what you said?
I think, what I was suggesting was, so there, it's not up there at the moment, but the, the plan that we had submitted, if it's going back up, whoop. Okay, that plan. So, what we had said is, and you obviously vote however you want. You, you know, you can vote to approve, you can vote to approve with conditions, you can deny, you know, those are the, you know, whatever you choose. What I was suggesting is that if the board, when you're deliberating, is predisposed, after you go through all your deliberations and considerations and conditions, to approve the project, then this is the project that the applicant's able and is willing to proceed with. What I was requesting is that if the board isn't, you know, for whatever reason, if you are going to vote no, or if you are going to vote yes with a condition that the density be reduced, which again, is something you could do, then I was asking that you go back to the original plan, which, not on, not on building heights. The building heights are what was agreed to subsequently, but on the site design, Mr. Nixon, because, as I noted, it provides a better quality of life for the residents, you know, more protected green space for the play area, et cetera. So, that's what I was suggesting. If you have any questions on that.
Yeah, that seems to me to be, that doesn't, doesn't make sense to me, that if, let's say we do vote yes with the following conditions, whatever they might be, and that either you decide or you decide on the spot, no, we can't accept that. Well, wait a minute, we just voted yes with the following conditions. So, I can't see that you would then expect us to vote again based on the original plan.
Oh, no, 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 I think you'd be having, I think you vote once, because you have one application.
Okay, I just want to understand that.
25034 is one application you'll vote. If you vote yes with conditions that the applicant feels are uneconomic, then the applicant has the right to appeal to Housing Appeals Committee. And what I believe the applicant would do at that point is request the Housing Appeals Committee review the original plan, for the reasons we've discussed. But you're, you only vote once.
All right, okay, good. I, I just want to get that straight, because I thought I heard you say, oh, no, and then we're going to ask you to vote again, but you're not going to...
No, but if in deliberations, it's very clear, you know, you deliberate, you know, kind of, even deliberations, it's very clear that what's going to happen, that's when I suggested it.
Yeah, I see, okay, fine. Thank you very much.
But, but we don't have to do that. You suggested it, and we're going to ask the attorney if we had to do that, so...
Oh, yeah, I just requested it.
Yeah, you just asked, and the answer may well be no. So, okay. Questions from Ed Acton, for the attorney or for Penrose at this juncture?
For Penrose. I just wanted to, I think I may have been the one who originally brought up the irrigation well. And I just want to give you my thoughts on what I was asking for. I was asking for an irrigation well and, you know, permanent drip edge for all the shrubs, and permanent irrigation for the grass areas. And the reasoning behind that was, I wanted this development to look like the rest of Chatham. I want it to look nice, and I want it to look nice in the future. I want the kids to have a green grass to run around on. So, that was sort of my idea. And why I suggested the, the private well was so that you had the availability to do that, to actually water when you, when you needed to, to keep things looking nice. This is sort of a gateway into Chatham, and I, I would like it to look like, you know, a condominium development in Chatham, or another apartment complex in Chatham. So, that, that's just my thoughts. How the board votes is, is up to you, but that, that was what I was thinking. And then, at one point, I had also brought up the solar panels. I believe we've heard that you are going to do solar panels. I would expect that you would, you know, maximize the number of kilowatts for the development that makes sense, you know, the, all the south-facing roof lines, all the southwest-facing roof lines. I'm just assuming you, you would do that, or I'd like to see that. But I would also like to see your, I know these are passive houses, but even passive houses, I've, I've built passive houses with heat pumps, their electricity bills are going to be high, especially if it's cold weather. If it gets below 40 degrees and they're having to use those heat pumps, they're not efficient. So, I'd like to see the, the money from the solar panels go back to the residents, if It doesn't have to be metered separately or anything like that, but it could be simply, you know, you total it up at the end of the year, and perhaps that gets deducted from their rents. I don't know, I'm just, my concern is, you know, the Massachusetts is, is pushing electricity and wants us not to use fossil fuels, and, but at the same time, they keep increasing our, our electricity rates. So, I'm concerned that people who have, you know, are living on a budget will have a problem, so I'm trying to offset that however I can.
One thing I'll note there is, we do reduce the rents per the utilities.
Great.
So, their, the cost of their utilities is, conceptually, already taken out because of the reduced rent, in, which is above what the calculated affordable rent is. Then it takes a step below to cut out costs for their utilities. So, that's already going to be done. I, I don't know about the mechanics of giving the solar back, so I don't want to commit...
So, you don't actually know what the figure is yet?
I don't know if there's going to be client issues or anything.
You don't know what the figure is yet, because you don't know what you're doing exactly for solar.
Exactly. But if it's a revenue source for the project, that's best for all the staff and the folks that live there, because that provides money for, you know...
Common areas.
Yes, landscaping, you know, resident events, stuff like that.
Fair enough. Okay, that's pretty interesting.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Veach, questions for Penrose or Attorney Tallaman at this juncture, or anyone else?
Well, I also just, in terms of the discussion about the irrigation and stuff, and thanks for clarifying that, Ed. And it, because my understanding, at least with the town currently, is that the town has, for a while, taken a position that if you have an irrigation system, and you're using town water, it has to be metered separately from your other, so that they can, you know, probably charge different rates. So, that is an understanding for anybody who's putting in an irrigation system, absent having a well. And so, a well can get around that. However, as Paul pointed out, we're all drawing from the same aquifer, so at a certain point, who knows who wins in that, in that deal. And then, the only other thing, and I'm not sure, I, I'm not even sure how to formulate a question. I am thoroughly confused about the, the proposal to drop the community, to decrease, further decrease the size of the community slash management building by eliminating the common room. I mean, first of all, I, I think that's a horrible idea, and I will try to push back against it to whatever degree I can. I just, I don't think it's completely antithetical to what we're trying to do here, and especially, especially when I consider that some of the objection to that has been about the streetscape. And, and by the time we're all said and done here, I don't think this changes the streetscape in a way that's positive. But I, so I'm not sure how, I mean, I, so given that's how I feel about it, I'm thoroughly confused about how I should be voting when, as it ultimately comes to us. Somebody's got to, somebody's got to tell me, well, Dave, if you vote this, then that means that, or you've...
We will.
I hope so, because I have no idea what to expect.
We will, yeah.
We'll go through each condition.
Yes, we will. All right, so...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just to respond to that.
Sure.
This is going to sound self-serving, because it is, but the applicant, you know, would be happy if the board wants to put the community room back in the management building, they'd accept it either way.
That would be something that we can deliberate on later.
Absolutely.
All right.
But while the hearing's open, I wanted to put that on the record.
Of course, yeah. So, before I say anything, I, I wanted to ask our Attorney Tallaman to respond to two people in the audience that I want to give that respect to. Carolyn McCullen is, she's a housing official in our town, and she made a statement about, why do we treat this different in our deliberations and our questions than we do for the, all the other applications? And I thought that was a great question, and I'm, she's not going to like the answer, but Attorney Tallaman, please answer it.
Right, this brings us back a little bit to where we started. It's because this is a different statute. There's Chapter 40A, which is conventional zoning, where all the deference goes to the board. Where a board can say no, yes, maybe, with basic impunity, as so long as there's a rational basis for their decision. This is Chapter 40B, where the deference is flipped a little bit, where the deference is to be afforded to the benefit of the affordable housing developer. That is, that the statute presumes that there is a benefit to affordable housing, and the burden then shifts to the board to demonstrate that there would be no benefit to the affordable housing, or that the local concerns related to that affordable housing outweighs the affordable housing. So, in other words, that the impacts to traffic, safety, environment, whatever, locally, is more important than the affordable housing, with a heavy weight to be placed on the presumptive benefits of the affordable housing. So, in other words, under Chapter 40B, we have to, we're in the shoes of essentially making an argument that the affordable housing would be outweighed by the local concerns. We're under Chapter 40A, we don't have to say much of anything. We can just say no for basically whatever reason we want, within reason. But, so it's a little bit different, and we don't hold the, all the cards. And furthermore, as the cases have developed over Chapter, under Chapter 40B for the last 56 years, the courts and the Housing Appeals Committee have taken a relatively dim view on municipal positions of denial of affordable housing projects proposed under Chapter 40B. That's not to say that that's universal, but it is an overwhelming majority of cases that suggest that the towns will have a difficult time meeting their burden to demonstrate that local concerns outweigh the presumptive benefits of affordable housing. In between that, of course, is the issues that we've been speaking about over mere conditions on that affordable housing, and it's a slightly different standard. Again, it puts the town at their proof, rather than the developer at theirs for that analysis.
Okay, thank you. And then, when, when we received the correspondence from Elaine Gibbs, I emailed you that, and I CC'd Sarah, and I asked you to go through, just to make sure that we're not missing anything. I, I thought that some of those responses are probably not in our lane, and I wanted to, I wanted to hear it from you, if there's any that are in our lane. Yeah, please.
Yeah, I mean, some are out of our lane a little bit, and some are in our lane. Now, a lot of it has already been addressed within this hearing over the past several months, so I'm not going to retread over that last ground. But Ms. Gibbs made reference to a concern over essentially an enforcement issue, like how do we ensure that Penrose lives up to the expectations and the letter of what they're proposing? In that vein, the, any permit issued to Penrose would be no different than any zoning permit that we issued to any other entity, and that we would have enforcement of the basic terms within that permit, meaning that the zoning enforcement official in the town could initiate zoning enforcement proceedings with respect to the Penrose project, should they not comply with any condition of approval. Now, some of that necessitates us being very careful about imposing conditions that are exacting and clearly understood, and leaving no stone unturned, especially on the issues of importance to us. But we've, we've been drafting 40B decisions for a long time, and we try to make sure that we have everything baked into those conditions that would enable our zoning enforcement authority to enforce, if they have to, any particular violation of the conditions of approval.
Okay, and what about the one about the lease? Is that in our lane? We haven't seen the final lease. Should that be something that people should be concerned with, or, or not?
Well, I think, I think you mean lease of individual units?
Yes.
Well, I think what we could ask for in terms of the condition is at least to see, like, if, if we have a requirement, like, take the assigned parking, for example, and if we have a requirement in there that says that every lease shall have a specific assignment of one space, and then, you know, whatever other rules there may be with respect to the other parking spaces, then we would certainly ask to see, for at least an administrative review, a copy of their prospective lease, to make sure that it has the terms that reflect the necessary conditions of approval. The business terms of those leases, the amount that they're charging, obviously, those are going to have to conform to whatever regulatory agreement, which operates as a deed restriction on the affordable units. But we would expect to see all of those documents, but only to the extent that we need to make sure that they conform to the requirements under 40B and... that we need to make sure that they conform to the requirements under 40B and reflect the conditions of approval. There may be some other terms that are irrelevant to us, but it's not atypical for us to at least re, have, you know, just a simple review of the lease to make sure that it gels with everything else that we're doing here.
Yep. Okay. And then, last but not least, we need to talk a little bit about this crosswalk and flashing light situation, because, you know, that's a condition that I think some board members, especially in light of the police officer, police chief's letter and his feeling of it, that it's, it's very important. So what if people want to condition that? And, and that would be their most important condition safe, to approve it. How, how much teeth do we have with that condition? What happens if the state says, you don't really need that, sorry, you have one too close? And then does Penrose have to come back to us and ask us to remove that condition at that point? And what if we don't want to?
So this, this becomes a fairly tricky issue. You know, we can only issue decisions with respect to things that are under our particular control. Here, I think it is perfectly acceptable for you to say that you are requiring them to seek and apply all due diligence to the obtaining of state permission to install a crosswalk there. And I think probably they'll be successful. I think it would be probably beyond our ability to say, if you don't get this, this project is dead. I think what we would say, probably, and we can work on this when we're drafting decisions, is that if you, if the state denies you despite all due diligence, then come back to us and tell us and explain why they denied you. And, you know, by and large, what I, we would probably be compelled to do, because it's not our lane, to decide issues with respect, with respect to state highways. We were only issuing a decision with respect to our local bylaws and the jurisdiction that we have under our local bylaws. We would probably be somewhat constrained to waive that. Now, i- if the state is non-responsive or unreasonable, we might say, try harder, or have you thought of this? Or have you thought of that? So there could be some gray area. It's entirely possible the state has a very good reason, or could have a very good reason, for rejecting the crosswalk where we want it. But I think it's certainly fair game for us to require it, and affirmatively require, and affirmatively require that they work hard to get it. I just think it's probably one of those things where the more recent cases of the Housing Appeals Committee have pressed pretty hard to make sure that local boards stay out of things that are regulable by states, by the state.
Even when it's a safety issue?
E- even when it's a, a safety issue. So what we can grab a little bit, Randy, is our general omnibus authority under special permits, which are kind of subsumed in the 40B process. What I'm suggesting is a kind of a combination of those kind of analyses. And if, in fact, they, we have an otherwise pretty good permit and don't want to risk losing this battle, then I think what we would be constrained to do is go my route. Now, let's spell, let's kind of spin this out, how we go. If they otherwise get an approval, that they don't appeal, because it's a reasonable condition, and they come back to us and say, look, everything else is going great, we just can't, and they don't appeal. We just can't get approval from the state. We'd like you to waive that requirement. And we say no, then I think the, the path forward is probably for them to appeal that specific denial. It doesn't open up the rest of the permit. But it really kind of depends how we structure it, as to whether or not it would be so onerous that they might appeal from the get-go. But I think there's a way to do this in a way that is not harmful to Penrose, that just puts them to their due diligence to do what we think is best. And frankly, I think they're likely to be successful, provided that there's not a good technical reason to not do a crosswalk, to get a crosswalk in the vicinity of what our police chief is suggesting. It's a bit of a, it's a bit of work, because the state is slow and they're exacting. But unless they have a specific reason, and no one has indicated a specific reason to say no, then I would hope that they would be successful in that regard.
Okay. So we can bring this back up during deliberations, then, correct?
Yeah, I think it's something we should, obviously, it's going to be the subject of deliberations, because the police, police chief feels really strongly about it.
Yes, he does. Yes. Okay. So I guess that's, that's it for questions? Oh, yes, please, Virginia.
Okay.
And anyone else that has questions, absolutely.
Okay, I have two, two more questions. There was a comment, a letter, a letter was written in about the Stone Horse Hotel. Remember that earlier tonight? So it just reminded me of a question that I've had for a while, and maybe, maybe you know it, maybe you don't. But that was an existing hotel that was demolished, is my understa, this isn't Harwich, but it's just a good example of the question. And so it was sold, and then it was demolished, and it was re, it was a new development of affordable housing went there. Okay? So my question is, if it was rehabbed instead of sold to a developer and rehabbed, all for affordable housing, would, theoretically, pretend this isn't Chatham, would, would we, and maybe it doesn't apply, because I think it's a state thing, would you get the same state and federal tax credits for rehabbing an existing building? In this case, a hotel, 44 units. Would you get the same state and federal credits or, or support vis a vis a new development? A new development?
Let Leo answer, but I just want to point out, because, so I know the property you're talking about. Just so that the board is clear, besides the fact that it's in Harwich under different zoning, that's not affordable housing. That is, they obtained a variance from the Board of Appeals in Harwich to operate seasonal employee housing.
Okay.
It is a dormitory style. So it is a completely, you can answer the question, but it's completely.
So, so forget about the Stone Horse, forget about Harwich, just in general, Mr. Singer. Would, if, if there was a house, let's say the Chatham Motel, which is right next to the Buckley property, said, hey, you know, we're going to get out of the family business, and we wanted to go to affordable housing. And the structure's already there, and it would be rehabbed, not redeveloped, torn down and, and sold and redeveloped. Would, is, does the state give the same credits to that scenario as they do to new development? That, that's my question.
Yeah, not to sound too much like an attorney, but I, I think the answer is it depends.
Okay.
Right?
Okay.
On a bunch of factors.
He did it really well. He might not have tried, but he did it well.
I, I just have had that question for a while, and I've, I've never found the answer, so.
Yeah, so there, there's different allocations of low-income housing tax credits based on preservation, rehab, and new construction. New construction is most attractive to HLC. There's also historic rehab credits, which could potentially, if it was a historic structure, which.
Why is new development attractive, more attractive?
Uh, it's production, because they, they want to produce new housing. And I think this, it's still important to maintain and rehab existing housing.
Yeah.
I think the priority is creating.
You're not going to get that same commitment if there's not the same amount of credit. That, that's where I was kind of just wondering. If it was tilted for new development.
Yeah, and it, it depends on, on a bunch of different factors, like how many units are going.
All right, it sounds like, I don't want to spend more time on that. It's, it's not applicable here, but it made me think about it. Rio, you said before, just not long ago, that the same people at Meeting House, the support staff at Meeting House, it would be the same roles and maybe number of people. I don't know if you said the number, but the same people, and you went through what all the roles were, would be the same, would not be different than this, than the support staff you have at Main Street? Is that, that's what you said?
Yes. They would each have a property manager.
Yeah.
Maintenance director.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. And that, that's, we would be sharing a residence service coordinator, a assistant property manager, and potentially assistant maintenance tech that would be shared. Some of those people shared would also be shared with Fair in Orleans and Village of Nausicaan. But, but that is one of the reasons we're able to get support on a 42-unit project, the type of staff that we need, whereas if it was just, you know.
So the question is, where are you staffing them if they don't have a management building over there? Are they in the management?
There's a management room, yeah.
There's management space in Meeting House.
It's not as big. There's one less office, but there's, there's space there.
Just not as big of a management building. Okay.
That's right. So I think the residence service coordinator would really be based at the office in, in Main Street.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have a question before we ask Paul to move to close the public hearing? Okay, Paul?
I'll, I'll, I'll move to close the public hearing and move into deliberations. Dave Veach, seconds, and vote yes.
I vote yes.
I'll vote yes.
Oh, did you want us to stop?
The only, I just want to, about the crosswalk, we, we're, we're in support of it, too. Like, I want to make sure, like.
We understand.
Yeah, okay. Someone said if we weren't, wouldn't want to do it. I want to make sure we.
No, no, we, we never said that. Yeah. Go ahead, Jenny. You close the, vote yes to close the public hearing?
I vote yes to close.
All right, as do I. That's unanimous. The public hearing is closed. Now we're going to start deliberations for a little while, and then we're going to ask, we're going to come back on November 13th to hopefully complete deliberations and, dare I say, vote. But no guarantees, you know, but.
Start deliberations now?
Yes.
Okay.
Just.
You want us to sit? You want us to sit?
I didn't, yeah, I, sure.
If you have a question, ask us.
As you were. Yes, yes. All right. Let's just see, who wants to go first on deliberations? Maybe Dave Veach does. I don't know. We know how you feel.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm, I don't think, I think, feel like I've been fairly transparent. You know, certainly of, of my goals, anyway, and that's why, why I said what I said about dropping the communal space. I, I just think that's, that's a, I don't see how that enhances this project in any way, shape, or form. And so I would like to see us consider allowing them to put that back, back in. Because I don't, again, if I look, when I look at the streetscape, and we've had various discussions about the streetscape and opinions given and things. And also, in, in looking at, this helped kind of reinforce it for me, looking at Thad's LIDAR representation. To me, a building belongs there. You look at that, we look at his, his LIDAR with, with no building there. And, and I think Leslie mentioned this, and when, when she talked to us today or tonight. You've opened up, it's like you're missing some teeth there. You know? I, I mean, I'm sorry, it just, that building belongs there, in my judgment, visually, and for the streetscape. I mean, the streetscape, and the streetscape, as I, as I had mentioned before, if they, if the planning board is successful at, at getting the, the form-based zoning placed in, in West Chatham, they're hoping to, that, that, that zoning is, is designed to, over time, eliminate those parking spaces in front of the buildings, bring the buildings up to form a street wall, as you might find in downtown Chatham, that everybody thinks is, is a great thing, or Province Town, or whatever. So I, I don't see that having buildings, you know, three buildings in this project up not far from the street, marching along, that's all within the, the rhythm of the architecture in that area. So that's just another, another reason why I don't think there's, you know, to, to, to eliminate that space. It doesn't add up for me in, in terms of, I don't see that as an improvement in this project. And, and, you know, ultimately, all of us, and I think we have some different ideas, but the part of what we are doing here in, with our, in, in, you know, thinking about our conditions, is to try to improve, make improvements in the project from the perspective of the town. And again, I, I tend to favor more the, the occupants of, you know, of the, of these projects, and what life will be like in those situations, because those people are going to be members of, of our community. And, you know, it's, and then again, you know, and, and as Mr. Whitcomb started to quote from our, our handbook, and Randy, you pointed out that we've all been looking at it, and we have, and I continue to, to, you know. And, you know, it just, I, I just want to read one little, a couple of sentences here in talking about this, because it helps to frame it a little differently for me, too, about some of the objections to these projects. It says that low or moderate, and this is page two in this handbook, that the state has prepared. Low or moderate income housing often sparks objections from residential and non-residential neighbors. And in most cases, the proposed housing involves a higher density than the development pattern found in surrounding neighborhoods. However, communities have largely controlled the makeup of their population by the choices they have made to control housing growth, the, the zoning that we have in place. Introducing different types of housing opens doors to a more diverse population. And sometimes it is fear of difference that triggers opposition. And I think we have seen some of that among various things. So I, I, you know, the, we're, we are watching with the real estate and what happened. And the other, the other thing that I think is instructive, that I keep going back to, is on a budding property on Jesse's Landing, sold for $3.2 million this past summer, while we were considering all this. To me, that illustrates the huge problem that we are faced with with respect to affordable and/or attainable housing in this town. I think it's a perfect illustration. So I, I'm trying to keep all this in mind, and, and, and I, I don't, some of the things that I'm hearing, I don't, I, I wouldn't agree, actually, will lead, will lead or would lead to a better project. And, and I, and I think also, I also, you know, this process has been going on since long before we became involved. And, and there's, there's, there's a history of, of this process. And I think, I think there are many of the people who, who are hoping that we are going to, as a board, are, are going to maybe rewrite the history of, of what's happened with the Board of Selectment and the Affordable Housing Trust, and all the various things that, that have components of the process that has led it to come before us. And I'm, I, I don't, not sure that I see that as our role at all. Our role is to provide a comprehen, you know, to grant, hopefully, a comprehensive permit with conditions that we think are, improve the project, or are better for the town in one way or another. And not, not to be trying to relitigate past decisions that have been made by the town fathers and, and, and other boards that, that many people aren't happy with. There are also many people who are happy with those, so.
So fair to say you would find it pretty easy to approve?
I, I think I would find it fairly.
That's what we're trying to.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all we're trying to get to.
All right, yes. I think it would be fairly easy to, to approve it. I think there are some conditions that have been, we've talked about, that I, I would have some problems with, but we'll get to that.
Ed, what do you think?
If you were voting?
If I was voting. Well, I've been in, sort of an advocate from the beginning. As far as the community center, I wanted to perhaps eliminate the community center in order to provide more units. Obviously, that, that, it isn't going to happen. So going back to the original size is fine for me, if it's going to provide more services to the people. Carolyn made a statement in a, in a meeting earlier that, excuse me, that most of us couldn't relate to a project like this, or would never have experience with a project like this. like this. I grew up on the Cape, and for five years, lived in a subsidized project, and it helped our family greatly. So I may have a different perspective on these types of projects, and when I think about them, and especially reducing the number of units, I think of myself and my family, and how much it helped us.
That's a great perspective to have. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Nixon, would you like to deliberate today?
No, I really have an awful lot to say, and it's getting late, because we've heard a lot today, so I don't care to deliberate today.
All right. Paul, would you?
Well, I also have a fair amount that I'd like to say in connection with this, and I agree with Dave that we've gone quite a while, and I'm thinking that perhaps doing this with some reflection and also with a fresher mind makes more sense than to try and put it in today. But, because my view, my views have changed on some things and not changed on others, so that's why I think it makes sense to give it another break.
Sure, sure, because you're not, you don't want to just say one thing, one way or another at this point, so it's not as easy for you to do. All right, Lee?
Well, I can say a couple of things. I will echo Dave Veach's feelings regarding the management building. At first, I liked it. At first, I thought it looked better, smaller, but then I looked at the floor plan, and I thought to myself, well, if they wanted to have a birthday party, could they use some of that space? And I don't think it would work. So I'm kind of back, and I think we've had three different renditions of the, of the community building. I would go back to the middle one, which was not as big as the original, and a little bit bigger than the one that we have now. I think it's important, I think to have no community building would be not a good idea. I think that it is, does serve as a great buffer to the green space, and I think, I think it looks nice. This whole, this whole process has been a real learning experience for me, in particular, first time for me with the 40B, and I think most time for most of the people on the board with the 40B, and it's just, it's a lot, it's, but it's so important, and, and I think it's actually maybe the first time for the town and select board in a long time. So, anyway, and the Affordable Housing Trust, which is, I think, a new entity. So I think it's been valuable, I think it's been a good experience. I, I believe that this will be a good project. I believe that it will fit in nicely. It will be different, that is for sure. But I think that as time goes on, it will fit in. I am especially happy with the trees along Route 28 being an increased size. I think that's a good move. I think the irrigation system is a good move, and the concept of a temporary irrigation system doesn't make sense to me. I think if we have a well there, we should, we should use it with discretion, you know, you know, kind of abiding by the town's guidelines regarding watering days and times, like we all do, some of us, anyway. So, and, you know, I feel like, the other thing I would like to do is kind of, you know, talk to Penrose, too, because you guys have been so patient, very accommodating, and it's amazing that you guys can sit there and just listen to all this. So I commend you guys for that. And I think I'll stop there for now.
So fair to say that you'd be happy to approve it if you were voting?
If I were voting, I could find my way to approve this.
Yes. Steve? And then we're going to go to Ginny and...
Okay. I guess I'm sort of in the same mindset. I think I'd like to deliberate with myself before I deliberate.
Okay, fair.
Officially, but there are a couple of points. You know, the well issue, I think is a no-brainer. I think it would be silly to make it temporary, you know, and we're going to, you know, water the trees and grass for two years and then stop, and then watch everything die. So I, that doesn't make any sense to me. So I think it would be a good idea to put in a permanent system. The admin building is, I was kind of surprised to hear that you might want to downsize it. I think, I think it would be, it's a needed asset for the people who are there.
They don't want to downsize it. They think we might, and we might, so just keep...
Right, so I thought that was an interesting conversation. And then I'm going to go back and watch Thad's videos a couple more times, because I am a little concerned about some of those buildings, especially along 28, the height of some of those buildings and the way they, their perspective and things around it. So I'd like to go back and look at that a few more times, and then maybe I'll have a, a little bit more to say about it next time.
Yeah, well, that's great, and I just want to point out that we had asked Penrose, I believe Paul did, for a 3D video, and we didn't get it. So we took it upon ourselves to try to get one, and we appreciate that. I think it was extremely helpful, and we'll be forever indebted to East Southeast. So Ginny?
So I'm going to keep it short, too, because I'd like to deliberate a little bit more myself, but I do want to also say a couple of things. First of all, to Penrose, you have been so patient and so professional throughout, and it is not lost on us at all. We've had disagreements about some things, we've been challenging on things, but it's, it's really been, it's been a pleasure to work with, and Mr. Singer, your whole team, through the seven months. You have helped through that, those seven months. You have been accommodating, I would agree, trees, the well, tonight, the parking, you gave us a little more there, setbacks. But we've been accommodating, too, in this process. It's been very much a give and take. We reduced height from the very beginning, because you said we need that height, that extra height for those buildings, you know, sea buildings. And we did spend a lot of time on the setbacks, because I think about a comment that Frank Messina made, if we don't get this one right, it's going to be harder to get the next ones. So this isn't just about this and we're done. We'd like for this to be a continuation of more affordable and attainable housing in Chatham, some for, for purchase, not just all rentals. And so, so anyway, we, I have been focused a little bit on, or maybe a lot, on, on the future, and not just this project, and trying to show the town, again, I mentioned earlier today, I'm not, these aren't my opinions, I'm sort of a, I'm taking it all in, I do a lot of research, I listen, and I feel as though much of what I share is what I, what I do agree with, but I'm sharing it on behalf of the townspeople that are saying that they want these things. So I just want to be clear that that is where, you know, a big part of what guides the things that I bring up and the things that I'm asking for. And I will also say that I am disappointed in the number of, that there is not a change at all in the number of units, because we have talked about it from the beginning, and many, many, many town citizens have asked for that. And so in the spirit of compromise, and I touched on this a little bit tonight, I was hopeful that we would find some compromise there, so that we could, we could, I think Mr. Schell said, you know, that we don't want perfect to get in the way of moving this forward, and no one's asking for perfect. And I felt like because the density has been brought up so many times, and I do feel as though, even though you've been accommodating, in order to accommodate all the things, like the setbacks, and things have had to shift, because the one thing that was a constant was the density, and I'm talking about number of units. And so in doing that, it, you know, just created pressures in other areas. So we, I just think that's been, that is a frustration of mine. And one of the things that I said in the letter that I wrote when I couldn't attend in September, was that I'd like to see a few less units or the removal of the management building. Not and, or. And so I appreciate, again, you're reducing it, it's still over 2,000 square feet, and I would still like to, you know, for me, I don't feel like you've addressed the things that I have been pretty staunch about from the beginning. So, so that is, that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Okay, so what I'll say are a few things. I'm dazzled by the community, I just want you to know that. The time and effort that people in this community have taken to give such detailed letters, most of them factual, I'd say 99% of what we got was factual. Some of it is opinion, but still, like, I just can't believe the efforts people have made. I'm from Medford, so I'm from a bigger town, I'm not used to, you know, this kind of coziness, but I felt won by it. And so none of the comments that we've gotten have fallen on deaf ears, as far as I'm concerned. And we're in a very difficult position here, because Paul said it, you know, early on, we're trying to stuff three pounds into a two-pound bag, or however he put it, and that's never changed, that has not moved. And yes, that is a, what happens with affordable housing, that you have density, I get that. But I'm still disappointed that we can't coordinate some kind of, you know, a compromise on that. Could I find a way to vote to approve of this? Yes. And when it comes to all the things that I consider, I think that we need to look forward to the streetscape and not look at what's there now and say, well, you know, some of those other businesses have very immature-looking trees, and they don't have a good streetscape, so anything they put here is going to be better. I think we could do a lot better than that. I think we could have a beautiful streetscape here, and I think that's what we need to aspire to. And so when I look at, I was really happy that Thad provided us with those outlooks, because I do think that it would look nice to have a middle building now. I have, I've come to terms with that. However, I am not a fan of the building that you have provided us with. It doesn't look Cape Cod-ish to me at all, and I think if you came back with another rendering of that, that looked like a cape, you know? And the two buildings that flank it are attractive, there's no doubt, but I think something in the middle there needs to look Cape Cod-ish and be, you know, more appropriate for the HBDC. I think it needs to be perfect for the HBDC, because we have an opportunity to do that now. And if you need to talk to people on the HBDC or staff, and whatever you need to do to make the best, I guess they call it elevation, to use the right parlance, to show us, I could find, I think I could find a way to yes, I'm not promising, but I would not find a way to yes with the, with the one that you've showed us now. And then I would start to dig in about all the other things that I think are not, are not good, never mind not perfect. It's, we're under a different law than we usually are, and no one gets that any better than I do. So I'm trying to work towards yes and get the best project for the town within our abilities. So I'm going to leave it on that note and ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn. You need to set?
Oh, sure, yes.
You might want to vote to move to continue first and then adjourn.
There you go, yeah, I got ahead of myself.
You don't need to move to continue, it's not a public hearing anymore.
Oh, okay.
Oh, how do you like that?
Do we have a new date? Is the new date...
Yes, November 13th.
Sorry.
No, just, yeah.
November 13th will be the continuation of the deliberations for the board.
November the 13th, and we're likely to vote that?
Oh, wait, hang on.
No?
Ed can't make it?
Oh, you can be remote, even on a phone for these.
Because that is our regularly scheduled Meeting House Project 40B Day.
So that's double whammy for you, but you could be on the phone, we do allow that for these 40Bs. We'll figure it out? Okay, all right, so with that?
I'll move to adjourn.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
I'll vote yes.
Ed votes yes.
All votes yes.
To adjourn?
Ginny votes yes.
Lee?
I vote yes.
Doesn't matter what order, we all vote yes, it's unanimous, and we'll see you next time, good evening, Chatham. What time is it?
5:19.
5:19.
Thank you all.